The regularization meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty P. M. in Rock Office.
Mayor Alahuza.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terry Panning.
Here.
Commissioner Seber is absent in excuse. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Donovan.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Major Ted Morris from Salvation Army. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Let's bow for prayer. Our God, we thank you that we can come in this place, in a public place, and discuss the business of this beautiful community. Thank you for those behind the table here who are elected and appointed to serve this community in many different ways, to represent us. Father, we thank you for each person who's here to be a part of the proceedings tonight. And God, during this most holy of seasons, as we celebrate a time when deity touched humanity, may we worship you in our own way that you've called us to do so, and that we may recognize the special time that we are in, a time when we worship and think of these holy things. For it's in your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. Tonight, we have a special presentation for Dr. James Gills and Mrs. Heather Gills. Dr. James Gills and Mrs. Heather Gills, the seat of Tarpon Springs, is very appreciative for your contributions to our community and to our society. Dr. Gill, on a personal level, I am honored to know you and to working out with you in the same gym for many years at the Total Fitness. I have been admiring you for your wisdom, your character, your generosity, and your athletic ability. This evening, the Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the people of Tarpon Springs, would like to present you with a certificate of appreciation and say thank you for everything that you did and you continue to do. Thank you. The certificate of appreciation reads, "Present to Dr. James Gill and Heather Gills, in appreciation for your outstanding accomplishments and years of dedicated service to our community through medical innovations, businesses, philanthropy, published works, faith, and community involvement." Thank you both for all that you have done. Mayor Chris Alahuza, Vice Mayor Talonson Terry Panning, Commissioner Ray Seber, Commissioner Jacob Carr, and Commissioner Connor Donovan, December tenth, two thousand and eighteen. We all want to say thank you on behalf of the people of Tarpon Springs. If you please come forward to accept it. (APPLAUSE). (INAUDIBLE) picture that we presented.
(INDISTINCT) that you'd like to. (INDISTINCT) and Jason, thank you for making medicine really great in this town.
Absolutely. With your help.
With your help. Spiritual have, I tell my Catholic friends who have Catholic hospitals, I say, you've gotta go and look and see where Jason's at, even scenes. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come here fifty years ago, and we've had a lot of fun. We've run to work, we've done a few triathlons, and we've really enjoyed living in Tarpon. It's allowed us a freedom to be with Terry Hunt and do a lot of things with Terry and his friend Glenn Keyes. And Glenn Keyes represents many of the people in this city who work hard and have survived nicely, and Terry represents another one. The people here, you couldn't have a better group of people running the city, and I really want to thank you for this honor. Thank you.
Thank you.[466.12][466.12](APPLAUSE). Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. I know Dr. Gills and his wife are very humble, and they wouldn't necessarily say a lot of these things, but I just want to highlight a couple of things that they've done. They founded St. Luke's in Tarpon Springs in nineteen sixty-eight, and Dr. Gills has operated, has performed more cataract surgeries than any other surgeon in the world, and operated on patients from seventy-seven countries. And early on in his medical career, Dr. Gills aided in the development of antibiotics that reduced the infection rate to one-seventieth of the infection rate in the rest of the nation. Dr. Gills also is an author of nineteen Christian Living Books with over eleven million copies printed. Dr. Gills has published more than a hundred and ninety-five medical articles and has authored or co-authored ten medical reference books, six of which were bestsellers in the American Academy of Ophthalmology. Dr. Gills has participated in forty-six marathons, including eighteen Boston marathons, and finished fourteen, fourteen and one-hundred-mile mountain runs. Dr. Gills has completed five Ironman triathlons in Hawaii, six double Ironman triathlons, and the last one at sixty years of age, each within the thirty-six-hour maximum timeframe. And one of the things, too, that Dr. Gills did is that I believe he, they purchased World Triathlon at one point, and Ironman was headquarters in Tarpon Springs as well for many years, too, and a lot of individuals don't know that. But with that, Dr. Gills and his family, and Ms. Gill has really done a whole lot for our community as a whole, and they've done a great job by just standing behind the scenes and letting a lot of their things get done without their name being out there in front of everything. So we really appreciate all that has been done for the city of Tarpon Springs, the community, and all the jobs that you've created for Tarpon Springs, and all the great recognition that you've provided to Tarpon Springs through your businesses. So thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you.[596.54][596.54](APPLAUSE). Vice Mayor Terry Panning.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to thank you as well, Dr. Gills, for all of your positive contributions that you've made throughout the fifty years of being in this community, and many of which Commissioner Carr has just highlighted so well. So thank you for all you've done, Dr. Gills.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none. We are now going to public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address. For the record, you'll be given four minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Susan Hales, and I reside at six-twenty-eight Kenneth Way. I'm here to publicly announce my candidacy for the office of Commissioner, seat one. I relocated to Florida seven years ago and chose Tarpon Springs as my home. I hold a bachelor's degree in finance from the University of South Alabama, and I have over thirty years of experience in financial management in both the profit and not-for-profit business sectors. In two thousand and sixteen, I completed the inaugural Citizens Academy program, and currently I'm serving as co-chair of the city's Budget Advisory Board. My reason for running for the office of Commissioner is first and foremost, my love of the city, and secondly, a desire to encourage more citizen engagement in core issues our city faces, which I strongly believe are fiscal responsibility, economic and residential development, and infrastructure planning for our growing population. In the last election, approximately one-quarter of our registered voters cast a ballot. I consider this to be a far-from-ideal level of participation. Historically, I see the same small group of people participating at commission or other public meetings. I applaud this group's passion for our city, but we need participation from more of the many talented citizens that are sitting on the sidelines, perhaps feeling they cannot make a difference. I, too, was one of those sitting on the sidelines, but I'm stepping up now to pursue this opportunity to serve. Tarpon Springs has a skilled and knowledgeable city staff that needs a commission that will help rather than hinder them in the performance of their work. There are business owners and citizens that want our city to preserve its history while also bridging the past to a path forward. I'm not what some would term well-connected in the community, rather, I'm an ordinary citizen that is willing to utilize my ability to listen and analyze and be a servant leader to our city. It is my hope that other citizens will become more engaged as I campaign, yielding a renewed energy and interest in positioning our city for progress and success. That would be a victory regardless of the outcome of the March seventeenth election. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak tonight, and I wish you all a happy and healthy holiday season.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mayor, City Manager and Commissioners, Anita Protus, nine-oh-one Bay Shore Drive. There was a wonderful article about Tarpon Springs in the Sunday paper. We couldn't have gotten any better publicity than that article. I forgot to bring it to you. Forgive me, my age, I don't remember everything. But I want to comment on Friday night. It was wonderful in Tarpon. The people who came, the children, first Friday, everyone had a wonderful time, but there's one item that I'm very concerned about. People using people's property for parking lots. They were charging twenty dollars, fifteen dollars, and ten dollars. That's a lot of money for a young family with three or four children. But my main concern is they were parking cars down in front of the tennis court at Craig Park for twenty dollars. They were charging behind the Bank of America, they were charging where Johnny's Garage is, twenty dollars. Then further down, they were charging on the old Stammas Hotel property, fifteen, and then other areas around town for ten. You know, does the city regulate this? Do they show that they have permission to use private properties for parking? There should be a requirement that if they're going to park, the police need to tell them, you have to show a letter of allowing it to be used. Who has the insurance? You know, if they don't have insurance on the property and they're using it, something happens, the property owner can be very liable for it, and it can bounce back on the city because we don't have any regulations. We need to look into that and set a rules and regulation standard for parking when we have affairs uptown, the art show, and around, because without them, the city is in danger and the property owner, and it is excessive amount of money. So that's why I'm bringing it to the board. We need to regulate and look at rules and regulations for it, and let them show that they have permission to park cars on people's property. Thank you.
Thank you.[914.82][914.82](MUSIC)
Evening. Peter Lacks, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. Couple of things I wanted to talk about. First off is the transparency and the accessibility of information on a timely manner. We, most of us know about all the hullabaloo in the meetings and the attendance at all those meetings about Sun Bay and Tarpon Inn and all that stuff. Now, if you go on to the website, and Irene's not here, she can't verify, but I spoke to her last month about it. If you go on to the website and go to meeting calendar, when I was looking, it was end of October, wanting to see in November, and she said, well, they don't have it set up that way. So at the end of November, you can't look, see what's coming up early part of December. So there was a meeting on Wednesday night, from what I understand, at the library, with regards to best-use practices. Now, the little throwaway, came out December fourth. You get it sometime that maybe afternoon, evening. By the time you look at it, maybe it's the next day, but that was the first notice I've seen anything about it. If you go back now and look, you'll see the December meeting calendar is there. And what I question, one, is why we haven't gotten it so we can see future meetings. You know the agendas, you know pretty much what's coming up on certain dates. And the board here had a big meeting the night before. Auditorium filled. There wasn't a mention at the beginning, hey, any of y'all who've been interested in what's been going on in the Sun Bay, we're having a big meeting tomorrow at the library. Now, as Protus mentions, how we got a big article in Sunday, this paper about Tarpon, and we hardly get coverage anymore, but from my understanding, on Tuesday, the day of the meeting, the big meeting, there was a man who was beaten up out in front of Tarpon Inn. There were a lot of police cars, ambulance, and I have a witness who spoke to me, saw a body bag leave. I ain't heard nothing about that. So on one hand, you have a meeting the next night about best-in-use, but the day before, you have an incident no one knows about, nor do people know about the meeting. Now, I don't know if other people know about it, or if it's been somehow broken in the public, because we won't get one of these till tomorrow night. But I think the public deserves some answers. Thank you.
Any other public comments on the items that will not be discussed today? None? Thank you. We are now going to the proclamation item number one, Feast Day of Epiphany. And I'll read the proclamation. The seat of Tarpon Springs, Florida, proclamation, His Eminence Archbishop Elpi de Fortos of America, in His Eminence Metropolitan Alexis of Atlanta, will be celebrating the Feast Day of Epiphany. And whereas the seat of Tarpon Springs welcomes honored guest Counselor General of Grease, Dimitrios Sparros, and whereas the seat of Tarpon Springs has been identified by history and tradition as the city in the United States with the longest consecutive celebration of the Feast Day of Epiphany, and home of the oldest and largest celebration in the United States. And whereas the seat of Tarpon Springs has been internationally known and officially designated as the Epiphany City. Whereas the seat of Tarpon Springs is the home of Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral, patron saint of spongers, shrimping, and fishing semen. And whereas the Feast Day of Epiphany is steadfast a truth to the believing custom-rich in tradition and culture of the Orthodox Christian faith. And whereas His Eminence Archbishop Elpi de Fortos of America, and His Eminence Metropolitan Alexis of Atlanta, have bestowed special honor to the seat of Tarpon Springs and Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral for their participation on the special occasion of the Feast Day of the Epiphany. And now therefore, I, Chris Alahuza, by virtue of the authority vested in me, as the mayor of the seat of Tarpon Springs, to hereby proclaim January sixth, two thousand and twenty, as a celebration of the one-hundred-fourteenth anniversary of the Feast Day of Epiphany. And with us today is Father Harris to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Father. You want to say a few words?[1261.15][1261.15](APPLAUSE). As those of you who know me, I'm a man of very few words. But in all sincerity, it continues to be our distinct privilege and pleasure to continue to pray for our city, to continue to ask the Holy Trinity to come and bless the waters of our city. We know that without water, we do not survive as human beings, and so it is a distinct pleasure and blessing of ours to be able to do that on an annual basis, and we appreciate the city's recognition of that blessing. Of course, this year, in January of two thousand and twenty, will be an additional, I don't know if landmark is the right word, year in that it will be the first visit of the new Archbishop of America, Archbishop Elpi de Fortos of America, who was recently elected and enthroned as our new Archbishop. So he will be in town, hopefully, the first of many years that he will be here. So it's slightly additionally special for us this year in that we have the ability to welcome him to our city. So thank you very much to the city, and of course, to all of our faithful. Everyone is always welcome, not just at Epiphany, but any Sunday and any Feast Day at Saint Nicholas. God bless you all.
Thank you, Father. We are looking forward to the Epiphany celebration here in Tarpon Springs, and I'm looking forward to welcome the new Archbishop of America, Archbishop Elpi de Fortos. Thank you. Commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none. Thank you.[1374.71][1374.71](MUSIC). We are now going to the presentation item number two. Jason Dunkle, President and CEO, Advent Health, North Pinellas.
Good evening. Can I get my presentation up, or is it loaded? Well, thank you for giving me a few minutes to share with you a recap of our year. And I called it, going into this year, the Year of Transformation, and that was really the most fitting title for our year, this time last year, because all the work that we were getting ready to do at the hospital. So I want to share with you the work that has commenced, the work that is in process, and the work that is to come tonight. And I can honestly tell you, I could speak for two hours easily on the great things happening at the hospital. Thankfully for you, I'm going to speak to about ten, okay? Does that work? So ten minutes on the Year of Transformation. And I'll start off by saying, we have transformed the hospital, not just the outside, but most importantly, the inside. To me, our culture is the most important asset that we have at the hospital, and a highly effective hospital is one that has a very engaged workforce. We are leading, are very close to leading Advent in total turnover, which is amazing, probably in the top decile nationally for healthcare, for a hospital, to have the type of turnover we have. So that's one thing that has really added a lot to our culture at the hospital. We have started our building campaigns as well, and we have done a lot with the community. So those are really the three areas, to me, that I feel we've worked hard on this last year. Let me show you. Very proud, too, of the awards that our hospital has received. CMS star rating of four out of five, and we're on a five-star journey. But this is very good, and I hope the community is extremely proud of our quality. I also say that we have nothing at the hospital if we don't have a high-quality hospital, a reliable one. We control variability, and we're working very hard on our quality outcomes each and every day. We always have work to do, and I recognize that, but we're doing exceptionally well in our quality. We're also a leapfrog A-graded facility. We are the longest-running A-graded facility in the Tampa Bay area, and that is at fourteen semesters. So I hope that the community is proud to say that their hospital is an A-graded hospital. Our Palm Harbor ER also received the Guardian of Excellence Award, which is recognized by the patients for high satisfaction, and this puts us in the ninety-fifth percentile nationally for our ER in Palm Harbor, and we've received this for several years in a row now. In addition, our ER here in Tarpon and in Palm Harbor collectively was voted the number one ER in USACs, which is our contracted ER company. So we contract for ER services, for the physician services. They have two-hundred-and-twenty locations nationwide, and our ER in Tarpon Springs and in Palm Harbor is their number one ER around the United States. So that's something, obviously, to be very proud of as well. And then the hospital projects. We're excited that we have broken ground. Let me first start with the renovations. So we have just almost completed the renovations throughout the hospital on second floor, three, six, and seven. So when you walk around the hallways, you'll see newly renovated floors, walls, new signs throughout, wayfinding, nurses' stations, and you'll see the mayor there on occasion, too. And this is myself and the mayor looking at some of the artwork from Calymnos that was just put up a couple of weeks ago. So we have beautiful art, and the goal, one of our goals, is to tie the community to the hospital as much as we possibly can. So if you're a staff member and you're from Calymnos, which some of our staff members are, you'll see them walking the hallways and resonating with the pictures that are on the walls. We also have beautiful quotes throughout. We have some scripture, along with other inspirational quotes. As our guests walk around our hallways, we want them to be inspired as well, and that's part of what we're doing there and part of the culture that we're trying to bring to this town. I would invite you all to come to the hospital and take a tour of the second floor and see for yourselves some of the art that has just been put up. But it's beautiful artwork, and I think you'll really be inspired, too, by some of the messages on the walls. Hospital renovations, as I mentioned, on the nursing units, new nurses' stations, and we have gone into some of the rooms, all the rooms on three, and done some renovations in there as well. That's the last of the floors to be renovated. That will be turned back over next week, and so we're very excited about getting that work completed. We have a lobby project that kicked off this year, and we're excited to have Christopher Still, who is in the midst of his work of art, that will be displayed hopefully shortly into two thousand and twenty-one. I had the honor of going and looking at the piece of art several weeks ago, and it really is amazing. It'll be a nine-by-nine painting that depicts our community, along with Advent and the mission that we have in our community, and you will see all sorts of And you will see all sorts of emblems, artifacts, things that represent our community that will speak about how amazing it is to be here and a part of it. So many of you know Christopher Still, of course, has a studio downtown, but we're excited to be in a project with Chris and to have commissioned him for a major work of art. You can see some of his artwork, and this is a charcoal depiction of what he's working And this will be in our new lobby. So we are renovating the lobby. We want the lobby to be a place that the community can come as well and to enjoy a cup of coffee and to witness the piece of art. And so we'll have a coffee shop as well that will be brand-new to the lobby. And you can see an aerial view when you walk in. The space will be reinvented, expanded. We're going to move some of the current offices out of the lobby and relocate them to really open the space up. We have high ceiling elevations in the little café that we currently have, and that's where the painting will reside. And this is just another view. The reception desk will be moved to the right when you walk in, and the painting will be present as soon as you hit the doors. You'll see it as you walk in. Very proud to say this is what we're going to look like in the future. We are going to have a beautiful hospital, and the exterior will fit the culture and the people that we have inside. And so I'm excited that the ER project is underway. We're doing the enabling work on the backside of campus currently, which will allow us to move to the front of campus and start the demo work. You can see as well that the new ER will be dropped to the first floor, which will be a wonderful thing for our patients as they come on our campus. They will come on the same level that the main entrance is located in and drop off before they get to the main entrance at the new ER. Beautiful new ER. We'll have plenty of parking for ambulance traffic, and our guests will have their own parking as well, which if you know how we're situated right now, they're all converged in the same area. So really looking forward to getting this project finished. This time next year, we'll be very close to being completed and hope to open in February of 2021. So a little over a year away from having a new ER in Tarpon Springs. Exterior wall, it's a $13 million exterior reskinning, and this project is in schematic design phase, so hoping to get started in this project in the spring. And this will bring that new look that you just saw. ER expansion, 18 private rooms, and our goal is to have CT and x-ray when we open. We are fundraising for that, and it's an $18.5 million expansion. Some technology that we brought to the community is very impressive. We have a DaVinci XI robot. That was a $1.6 million investment that we made last year. We have advanced colorectal surgery at the hospital along with thoracic surgery, along with general surgery. And so we're excited that we have the latest and greatest technology at our hospital. First case was done January 4 by Dr. Raj Kotek, and you could see he was very excited to have a new Christmas present. We are also replacing and upgrading our cath lab, and this is a big deal. If you have a heart attack, you want the best care, and we will have that. And so we're going to be installing a new cath lab in the early spring. We have two cath labs, and we're going to hope to, we will replace two eventually, but to start out, we're going to replace one. And I'm very excited that we're going to be doing this shortly. So you could see $944,000 investment, another million-dollar investment into the community. So what am I asking for you in 2020? Is to believe in this hospital. If you're driving past the hospital, I think that you shouldn't be. We've given you many reasons to choose our hospital. We're a highly-rated hospital, and I'm just asking you to believe in what we're doing there. And I thank you for believing in what we're doing there, but we need you, and we need the entire community to do what we need to do in this community. So thank you so much, and I'll open it up for any questions at this time.
Mr. Dunkle, I want to thank you for the presentation and thank you for the update on the progress and the transformation of our hospital. Personally, I would like to congratulate you on your leadership and the superb healthcare that you provided to the residents of Tarpon Springs. And I want to thank you for your involvement to our community. You are much involved with everything that goes on in Tarpon Springs, and thank you for that.
Thanks, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. Jason, I also want to thank you for your presentation and all the positive work that you all have been doing in our community over the last five, six years, maybe longer. But honestly, as an operator, we couldn't have asked for a better partner of our hospital. So we're appreciative of that. I was fortunate to attend one of the groundbreakings for the new ER facility, and I can tell you that we're, community-wide, we're excited about that as well as all the upgrades we're making. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Dunkle, thank you for the presentation tonight and your dedication to Tarpon Springs and seeing not just the hospital rise up, but other parts of Tarpon Springs as well. I know you all are very involved with the community, and it's great to see. I think you all have been more involved in the community than any other hospital that I've seen that's visited Tarpon Springs and has been our partner. I did have the privilege to help with your staff this past Saturday build beds with another organization that's based in Tarpon Springs, too. I think it's Sleep in Heavenly Peace, where they build beds for children that don't have beds. And all your staff members that I've interacted with were just great. It says a lot about you as a leader as well with that low turnover rate. I don't think it's, it's not an accident, right? You're making intentional decisions, intentional things to make, making sure that's a great place to work. And that being the number-one employer of the city is huge, too. So it's great to know that the turnover rate's super-low, that we've got great leadership there, and thank you so much for your involvement in the city. It's also great to see all the different awards that you've received, too, over the past year and years before that. And keep up the great work and looking forward to supporting you in the future. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duncan? Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I hate echoing what everybody else always says, but thank you so much for your leadership, really, truly. Our hospital does a lot within our community and couldn't be more thankful for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Come to the podium, please. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I live at 932 Royal Brookdale Drive, and I am a Foundation Board Member, and I just wanted to applaud Jason for all that he does. And I also wanted to tell anyone that's interested, I know this is shameless, but I'll give a plug for the hospital. If anyone would like to contribute to the hospital, we are open for donations. And you are, you can become a member of our Burnett Society that helps to buy these pieces of equipment that you've seen tonight for a mere $1,000. Thank you so much.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none? Thank you, Jason. The item number three is a follow-up on the previous audits. Bob Broline, Carr Riggs, Ingram, Internal Auditor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. Tonight, we have Rob Broline, partner with Carr Riggs Ingram, who is the city's Internal Auditor. He's going to present two audits. One's a follow-up audit, which goes back to the predecessor audit, going over a bunch of their audits. I did, I think, about three of them, the cultural audit, the procurement, and cash receipts. And then he's going to go over another audit that they just got done finishing up, which is a purchasing card audit. And I believe after the purchasing card audit, their next one they're going to be working on is a finance payroll timekeeping audit. So with that, I'll give you, Rob, to go over the two audits.
Good evening. Thank you again for the time. I apologize for, I was supposed to be here last week, but I had something come up and I couldn't make it, but appreciate the time for this evening. So as Ron said, this, two audits for this evening, one relates to a follow-up of previous audits, and... Down, or did I do this square? Might be a little faster. So I just wanted to kind of, this is a little bit different. So this is a follow-up of previous audits, our predecessor who did those previous audits. And so what we're doing here is going through, and the objective was to go through and look at these previous audits and look at those previous observations and recommendations and essentially determine whether or not the action plan developed by management was actually put into place. And so that was the purpose of this audit that we conducted. You can see in terms of procedures, I know you've read through this report, but we do a variety of, we do interviews, we do some sample testing, and we look at relevant source documentation to confirm that indeed they implemented the previous recommendations from the predecessor auditors. So here's a snapshot. Here are the previous audits that we followed up on. Again, these are audits that we didn't perform, but we came out, as you can tell by the report issue dates, that they predate us coming onboard. So we went through and looked, we took those reports and went through those reports, and you see the three ones we dealt with, cultural services and recreation, procurement services, and then cash receipts. And you can see in the snapshot that we were able, over time, to work with management in each one of those areas and able to close all those items. So the high, the high level is this, we're able to do that, and we even waited, we didn't want to come back a couple of times, so that's why we took some time. If you look at the dates of our comments for each area, you see our update is May 2019, or 2018, and January 2019, October 2019, because we wanted to come to you with a complete package and have it all done and to show that management was able to implement all of those recommendations from previous auditors. So the first section, we just put in front those that were considered high-risk by the predecessor auditors, so we could put those in front for your review. And again, I'm not going to go through every one of these, but every single one, we're able to close those. And you can see, and then, and then the rest of the report, then we get into the details of each audit. So I think at this point, I'll pause for this report. Again, it's every single item we went through, we did our testing, we're able to close those items, working with management. So I'll stop there and pause for any questions you might have about this report.
Thank you for the follow-up report. You found all the controls, procedures, and documentation to be properly implemented. Do you have any recommendations that we should do from now on?
So as part of this follow-up, since we were going to close the items that they had been recommended, at this point in time, we don't have anything in addition to what has been done for those particular areas. We did have, I will point out, we did have one area in which, let me just back up. We had, we had a few items that, as we were doing our follow-up work, we saw a couple things as part of the process we thought would be best practices for them to do, and those things were also implemented by the various departments. In particular, one dealt with, as you read in there, with cash receipts. And so we did have a few of those things, but those have also been implemented, so there's no additional items at this time.
So you don't have any recommendations for us?
No, the purpose of this audit was to, was, right, we don't have any additional recommendations to you as a commission, no, relative to this audit. Since it's a, since it's a follow-up audit, that was, the objective was to be able to say to you, these items have been closed and implemented. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just had a question on different things on a couple of pages. If you would, please go to page nine.
Thank you. This is more just a little note than a question. There's, there should be a note on the website clarifying that military and student discounts are available, they just need to have their ID in person. I went on our website to buy a, like a performance ticket, and I just didn't see anywhere on the website where it said, hey, we do discounts, you're just going to have to show it in person. So that's just a note for whoever's working on our website. If you could, please just put in a little note that says, hey, we do these discounts, but you're going to have to do it in person. And then on page 13, just moving on. Yeah, this is just a general question. It says the profitability analysis report is password-protected. Does that just mean it's like password-protected from like outside sources? I mean, it's still, is it public record, the profitability report, or? I just, I wasn't really sure what that meant.
I believe what it means is spread, the spreadsheet they're using is just password-protected there.
Okay, but like if I went to the city clerk's office as a citizen, I could still request it, fine?
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that. I'll give you a second to catch up. This one's for staff, but this is just for staff to make note of. I don't expect you to know it off the top of your head. Page 22 says that these type of grants will no longer be applied for due to the curator for Arts and Historical Resources position being eliminated. And I understand the reasoning for the OMB Circular A87 grant in specific. I understand that background. But I just wanted to know that in relation to the position, how many grants the position was generating, and if we just kind of moved those right into like our grants calendar, like something our grants committee is going to handle, or if they just kind of fell away with that position. And again, I mean, I can get the specifics later, I just wanted to be sure. And then my last one is the recreation section, I think if you keep going a little bit here. I can't find the specific page, but it does say, it talks about our recreation contracts. I just wanted to know the competitiveness of those recreation contracts. So like, say there's like a basket weaving class at our rec center, and they get the contract with our recreation department. And then I come to our rec department six months later and say, hey, I teach basket weaving, too, but I can do it for half the price, or something like that. I just wanted to know how long our contracts were and when there was a certain period where we could notify people that came in and wanted to get in, or we could say, hey, now you could bid on it or submit your information to us.
That would, that would be really a question for procurement management. They determine that. So I don't know if anyone here, I don't know if Ron can answer that, if there's someone here from procurement that can answer that.
It doesn't look like there is, but that's something staff, yeah, if you could just get back to me, just on how competitive that is and when they can get, when they can get their information to us. That's all I got for this presentation. You're going to go, four is a separate item, right? You're going to go over the other one? Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Commissioner Carr, did you have a question?
No, I'm good.
Moving on to the next item, which is yours, purchasing card audit.
Thank you. So this one now is an audit which we performed. This is our audit specifically of the purchasing card program. And so you can see, if you look on page two, if you get to page two, thank you. So here you can see the objective, then. We're actually looking specifically at the controls and policies and procedures related to the purchasing card function. And the purchasing card function is managed by procurement. They oversee it. And of course, the P-card function itself affects all of the city employees who have purchasing cards. Again, in terms of our procedures, we always conduct interviews with management and staff. We always do sample testing. As you can see in the report, we refer to that. And we're testing specifically in terms of what types of controls that are in place. Are they functioning as their design? Are they operating effectively? are they functioning as they're designed, are they operating effectively to protect the city from any misuse of assets, misappropriation assets, lack of approvals, that kind of thing? And also, is it, are those transactions that are occurring in compliance with those established purchasing card policies and procedures? Also, at the back of the report, you might have seen there, we like to do a lot of analytics, we think they're very helpful in providing a good picture of what's going on with the purchasing cards, and so those are in the back of the report, which I'm sure you've had a chance to look at. And finally, we always conduct an exit interview with the department director, him or herself, and we go over all the findings. And what we do there is we make sure that when we go through them, not to, in order to what we call, check the accuracy of those findings, to make sure we've not missed anything in doing our testing. We don't want to come with a observation or finding to you all, and actually have made a mistake because we just didn't get enough information. So we do that, and we work with them. And of course, as part of that also, we always talk to them as we make our recommendation in relationship to the observations that you see throughout this report, you also see their response. And that's the pattern throughout. So if you go to page three, here's our overall summary. Point out right away, you know, right away, there's no red with respect to the three observations that we have. I would say they are listed though, in terms of the order of priority in our minds, with cardholder management having the most matters that require most immediate attention, and then the reconciliation approval process, and finally, low-risk item related to scanning documentation. So on page four, I know you've read the report, so you see the various areas we've identified, all captured under the idea of cardholder management. First one deals with terminated employees. The next one is, that's where we run our analytics, as you note there, and we look at how frequently are these cards being used? You know, if you have someone who's using their card only a few times throughout the year, the question that we ask managers to ask themselves at the directors' level who request the cards, does that employee really need a purchasing card? And that's one of our recommendations, is to review that situation and to determine that. Also, excessive transaction limits. In our review, we found there was a lot of employees that had very large transaction limits that didn't really make sense for the type of purchases they were making. And again, something else to look at and to reduce those things. All these things are mitigating the risk of inappropriate misuse of those P-cards. And lastly, approver independence. Here specifically, we're talking about where department directors with purchasing cards, the approver was generally another member of the department, and we're saying really to, as a proper authorization, it should be a supervisor or above reviewing those department director purchasing cards, not someone within their own department. And then, so our recommendations on page five mirror those observations, you can see what we've recommended there in each one of those. We're recommending in terms of terminations, that they get some kind of a written report. Second one, identify those cards that are not being used frequently, and determine whether or not those cards are still needed. Of course, we also said, look at those default transaction limits, determine if lower limits are adequate. And then finally, having someone, supervisor above, in this case, you know, either the city manager, who of course, all the directors, department directs report to, or the city manager chooses to designate another department director to review those. And the short answer in management response is, they agreed with those recommendations to do those exactly, almost exactly as we recommended. The first one wasn't exactly, in fact, they went above and beyond. They, we said, you should look at this weekly, and they're pretty much doing it real-time. You know, having a process in place to know about real-time terminations in order to make sure those P-cards then are deactivated. Observation two on page seven, this deals with the reconciliation approval process. We did have some observations there. And then, in the first, in the first case, we had, six statements were not signed by the assigned approver, as required by the city's purchasing card policies and procedures. But we want to point out though, there, see, there is an electronic approval process within works, within the electronic P-card system. And those assigned approvers, that the approvals were done within works, and that's the software they use, okay? So the, so I want to be clear, the approvals were done, they just weren't done according to policy, which is done on the actual paper statements. But we did, we're able to go into works and see that indeed, the assigned approver had approved the transactions in works. And the other item deals really with the timeliness of getting those reconciliations to finance, so they can then reconcile the packages as a whole back to the Visa or the MasterCard statements, to reconcile with the bank. And so the recommendations then mirror our observations in terms of what we're asking them to do. One of the things I'll point out, and again, in each case of our recommendations, the management responded positively to do those things. The only, the only one that was slightly different, in our first recommendation, in the last sentence there, we say, consideration should be given to accepting approval in works and leave approval on paper statements. So, you know, many times, many cities and counties use an electronic approval process, you know, you might think immediately of maybe like purchasing, where you go through electronically, you can approve a PO and approve the purchase by various departments, you can do it electronically right through the procurement system. And so we suggested that, but you'll, in the next page, the response there was, finance though, their response in that was, they understand that, but if you look on the response, and it's where it says per finance, it's the third paragraph, their response was, paper document provides additional level internal control. And also, they say it's not a requirement, because I, one of the things we said to them, well, it's perfectly acceptable to do things electronically in terms of approvals, but if your external auditor wants the paper, then they're the ones issuing your opinion, then that's fine. It's certainly, it's certainly fine to do that, and that was, that's how that was determined. Then the last observation just deals with scanning documentation, so low-risk item. It's a matter of, you know, again, trying to be more efficient in having things paperless, and of course, they will maintain the original documentation, finances wants to maintain that on file, but for the rest of the departments, rather than of all that paper, is to have those things scanned right in, and instead of having paper for that. And then, if you just go to page eleven, so the rest here, eleven, just, I won't read this, but this is providing some background information on the process, and those three major areas, the three major areas again we looked at was cardholder setup and maintenance, the monthly reconciliation approvals, and then just the general monitoring of the program. We summarize for you there, give you just a brief description of how that program works. And then the rest of the report provides you with various, we like to think interesting analytics that I think help paint the picture for you, especially if you look in terms of how many cards per department, you know, active cards, that type of thing, and get a sense of the use and activity of the purchasing cards in various ways. That concludes my report. I'll open up for any questions.
No, thank you. Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a few. If you could, please go to page seventeen. I think page seventeen and eighteen are fantastic, by the way. That's exactly the type of stuff that we're looking for. Yeah, so for page seventeen, I just, I was just curious, so of the 124 cards with the limit of $999, what are those typical transactions? Is it just on like generic office supplies, or did you not have access to see kind of what those common spends, or expenses were?
Right. To answer your first question, yes, we had access to that, as far as what I recall, without having to go back, and it's been a while since we did the details, but yes, I would say generally speaking, it would be those types of things, office supplies would be very typical for those. And then, depending on what department they're in, it really, it really would be based upon what department they're in, but by and large, I would say it would be supplies of some kind.
Okay. Thank you. And then page eighteen, just two quick ones. So I just want to know, who has purchasing cards on the BOC? What are those for? And why do we need three of them?
Sorry, I'm sorry, for which one?
Sorry, for the mayor and board of commissioners. It says we have three cards. I've never even heard of that.
For fuel, travel.
You don't have one?
What is, what is that? So is it just, I mean, if we're, if, you know, we take like a trip to Tallahassee or something, we get a card, is that, is that what that's for? Okay.
I've never used one.
So that might be an example where, what I've seen, it's not that it's, when I say this, it's not that it's wrong to have that, so you don't see anything saying, you know, board of commissioners shouldn't have cards. But typically, what we see is, because they use them very infrequently, as some have said, for, usually for travel here and there, sometimes, you know, someone else will, like maybe the administrative secretary will have that card, because they'll use it for, maybe they'll purchase supplies, but then also will use that card for that. But, yeah, it depends, we see different things with different cities and counties.
Okay. Is that, is that like an option to us? We would be able to get, you know, like Tricia card or something that we could use whenever we travel somewhere?
Well, Commissioner, if you go to attend a conference or something, and you need a car, you should be issued one to charge it.
Three just seemed a little weird to me. Just a little high. I don't know when all three of us are going to a conference. I hope we do, I hope we get to that point. But, so that was just one question I had, and then the other one, I'm sure this has something to do with like the types of cards, but why are there more cards than people in procurement?
That, that's, the extra one there is, the director has two, I believe, is that right, Ron? I think, yeah, the director has two, because he has one, really, he uses, it's not for him at all, and, you know, he uses that for the, trying to take advantage of the rebates you get by using the P-card for the big purchases related to construction-type things.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why.
All right.
It's a good question, though. It doesn't make sense upfront, does it?
No, thank you. Those are the only questions I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? We're here now, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We are now going to the consent agenda. Number five is a satisfaction release of liens. Number six is the attorney fees. Johnson and Johnson invoice 5459, 5460, and 5461. Number seven is the special events. A SpongeDox Arts and Crafts Show on January 18th through 20th, 2020. B is the first Friday, February through November 2020. Number eight is to authorize execution of a contract for conducting in conjunction municipal election. Number nine is the award file number 200036-NJL, single source purchase of lift station supervisory control and data acquisition system. Number 10 is the award file number 200024CJL, technology solutions and related equipment and accessories through Sourcewell Contract Number 08141CDW. And number 11 is the extend file number 180041, CCM Security Officer Service Stay of Florida Contract Number 9212150014-01. Oh, that's not on there. We also have another one. Number six, attorney fees, aid, trasket annual invoice, December 5th, 2019. Any of those items that you'd like to pull?
Seven B and nine.
Seven A and B.
Seven B and nine?
Seven A, B, and nine. Is that right, Commissioner?
Okay. Any comments on the five, six, eight, 10, and 11? Are there any public comments on those items? I need a motion?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Merrill Huses?
Yes. We're now going to the special event, A, which is the SpongeDox Arts and Crafts Show, January 18th through 20th, 2020. Vice Mayor?
Actually, I think seven A was Commissioner Donovan.
Are you sure?
Yeah, this was, this was mine, there.
I just want to thank the merchants association for all the events they do. I know they, you know, get out there early, they stay late, I really appreciate all the hard work that goes into these events. We especially had some really good ones this past weekend, I really liked the attendance. One thing I do think that would be beneficial in the future for the city, the business owners in the area that are being affected, and the merchants association, is we add some sort of follow-up whenever we do a special event. I'm not looking for every, anything regimented or detailed, I'm just saying maybe like a month or so after the event, once you get some numbers back, or some just generic, you know, what events are doing well for us, what events aren't doing well, and why? You know, is it because of weather? Was it, you know, some vendors pulled out last minute, that sort of thing? And then, you know, just generic stuff, like based on your estimation, how many people attended, that sort of thing. So just, just some sort of generic follow-up I would ask for, like a month afterwards, and then, you know, for a lot of the businesses that have to close down their parking or something like that, it just becomes more justifiable, it becomes easier to point to and say, look, look at what these cities are, or look at what these events are doing for the city. So if you could, please, just in the future, you know, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but maybe the, you know, within two meetings afterward, or something like that, if we could get some sort of follow-up. Thank you.
Any other comments on seven A? Seven B, the first Friday, February through November 2020. Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
That was yours?
Yep. Yeah, I want to, to a degree, echo Commissioner Donovan's comments regarding the merchants association and the special events that y'all do. I think that it's a great thing. It's overwhelmingly supported by the residents and people who come and visit our town, and we're thankful that you do so. I think, just to piggyback a little bit on what he said regarding a follow-up as to the event and the successes of the event, and the things that we could possibly do better, I think that's a great, a great idea. Regarding the first Friday event, I noticed that the street closure is getting a little bit earlier, and I do have some concerns with that regarding some of the brick-and-mortar businesses that function seven days a week. And I think that closing the street at 3:30 is too early, especially as we go into the summer months when the hours get later, and I feel like people don't show up until a little bit later on those events to begin with. And then, closing the Tarpon Avenue restroom parking lot at 2:30, I also think is too early, given that there are some handicap parking spaces there, and also the restrooms basically become blocked off at that period in time. So I would just ask that the board reconsider that, and the merchants association consider a later time, possibly 4:30, but I would open that up to the board.
I'd like to ask the representative of the merchants association, why do they ask in for the street to be closed at 3:30? What's, what difficulties are you facing?
Hi, my name is Carol Rodriguez, I'm the event coordinator for the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association. The reason we're asking is our, for public safety, our public loves our first Fridays. They cannot wait to get down to Tarpon and Tarpon Avenue. Therefore, we're asking to close the street at 3:30 instead of 4:00, it's a half an hour, due to safety issues. Sometimes we have to have cars towed because they're not, they haven't left on the proper time, and it takes the tow truck a long time to come in to tow the truck. Then our vendor is waiting to set up, and we have a lot of people walking around, so it's more for safety of the public. We draw huge crowds, anywhere between 2,000 to 4,000 people come to first Fridays, depending upon the month. Then we have between 100 and 140 vendors to get in place. So that's why we're asking. I understand about the parking lot, the restrooms are not closed off because there's a sidewalk that they can get to. We are no longer getting beer trucks, so therefore, we set up a tent, we ice the beer, we have to go get the ice. And I just want all of you to realize, the money that we make from this, we put right back into Tarpon Springs, advertising Tarpon. I mean, we're trying to get into the Tampa Airport, advertising Tarpon Springs, we're in the Clearwater Airport, we want to work with the city to help pay for the billboards, we do a lot of advertisements. So everything that we do is to promote Tarpon. So if any of you want to come out on the streets, we've invited you before to do check-ins and to see for public safety is why we're asking to close the parking, the street and the parking lot. Now, if you're unhappy with the parking lot, then maybe we can go till 3 o'clock, or even 3:30. Now, if you're unhappy with the parking lot, then maybe we can go to three o'clock or even three-thirty. But we, that half an hour is crucial. And I know there are businesses, some are upset and other ones aren't. We're not going to make everyone happy. But I can remember almost five years ago, standing here, people did not think that first Friday was going to be a success, and it's a huge success, so.
First Friday is a very popular event. It brings a lot of visitors to Tarpon Springs, a lot of businesses to, uh, to our businesses. But also, we want to make sure that we do not hurt the other businesses that are there. And I was actually looking that you have a better communication with some of the business people and to see why, uh, you know, why you're asking to change the, closing the street from four o'clock to three-thirty. Why so necessary? You mentioned about safety. How that can be more safer if it is a half an hour? If cars are left there, isn't it the police there involved to pick them up?
Yes, but then they have to get a tow truck.
So how they can be a safety issue when the police is there?
Pedestrians and public people coming, and they're walking around. These every business, I know this. We do send out letters. We have gotten a call. One time a month, and it's only ten times a year on Tarpon Avenue. To bring that many people to see those particular businesses that are unhappy that we close a half an hour early? I mean, I mean, I understand them, but they also have to understand that it's a lot of work. It is for the safety of the public also. So one time a month, I don't think is too much to ask for a half an hour.
Did you have an opportunity to talk to the business owners of that area?
Reggie, my counterpart, has talked to one this evening.
Any other commission comment?
Yeah, what was the? I've got for you, too. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You're fine. Okay.
I'll come back to you.
So it starts at six o'clock, right?
Yes.
What, I don't understand why you need more than an hour to set up? The earlier you set up, the earlier people will show up, in my experience. So it could be the fact that you're setting up earlier, you're seeing more residents show up to it. And let me come back to say, I love first Friday. Thank you both for everything you've done from Merchants and all the hard work that you do. But I don't support it setting up earlier. I actually support a setup even later than what you're proposing and what we're at currently today. So I would say four-thirty to five o'clock even, from a setup standpoint. A couple of things I want to talk about, too, is where the vendors actually park. And I know, can you correct me if I'm wrong? Is there a shuttle that goes from the Splash Park for the first Friday?
Yes.
Okay. To me, I would think that the vendors, because right now the application says the vendors park just in the side streets and public parking lots. So that's one of my concerns that we have, is that Mother Meers parking lot is being used for first Friday. Court Street is being underutilized completely. There's not really any use, but it's being shut down. So one of my recommendations would be alternating it on a monthly basis. Maybe Mother Meers parking lot shut down one month, the next month it's open, and then utilize Court Street better with, um, with vendors, et cetera. You move them from Court, from Mother Meers to Court Street. But I don't support Mother Meers parking lot being shut down every month at all. So parking...
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I said okay.
Okay. Parking is at a limina, a very limited area, and it's, it's a very scarce resource. So the, a couple of things I would make recommendations on is that the, the setup times later, the vendors park over at the Splash Park and they can take the shuttle back. And then, uh, Mother Meers parking lot isn't shut down every first Friday. I'm for it happening a few times a year, but not every first Friday. First, because you've got the other business owners that use, um, how do I say? Their patrons are using that parking lot for the brick and mortar buildings that are open to park. And then secondly, it's, I, I think there's still other space in Tarpon Ave. to be utilized. If it's along Court Street, or if there's an oppo, opportunity to even pull it on the other side of Pinellas Avenue at some point in the future, if you continue to see future growth, I don't know what that would look like. But I don't support Mother Meers being shut down. So those are my three things that I have concerns about with first Friday. Again, love first Friday, love going to it. It's a great city experience. So thank you for everything you're doing.
I was just going to ask what the previous application times were.
When we first started, it was three. Then we moved it to four. And you, all of you said that if we felt it was a hardship in any way, we could come back. So now we've come back and asked for three-thirty.
Well, I don't support three-thirty either, so, uh, the alternation of Mother Meers parking lot, Commissioner? I don't know that...
That won't work. Sorry, Jacob.
I don't know that the alternation of the parking lot in terms of consistency and then also, uh, traffic flow for, you know, like how do you close down Tarpon Avenue all the way to Pinellas Avenue and then have Mother Meers parking lot still open? You know what I mean? I guess you could close the...
The one side against the Tarpon Avenue.
I'd want to hear from the PD on that, as far as that goes. But in regard to the timeframe, uh, I mean, going back to four o'clock, I would, I would be good with four o'clock on both the Tarpon Avenue restrooms and the street closure at four.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think maybe this illustrates kind of a, obviously, the bigger issue, the elephant in the room is our parking issues downtown and in the SpongeDocks. I think maybe that's something in the near future we could have a work session on. I know we've talked about different things, especially around budget season with parking garages and stuff like that. Just if we could just keep continuing that conversation, you know, keep this in mind moving forward. Me personally, I don't think thirty minutes, um, you know, once a month, ten times a year is that big of a deal. Uh, I use the parking lot every day, and it is inconvenient, you know, when Mother Meers is shut down for first Friday. But again, I barely notice it because it's once a month, ten times a year. So I'd be fine with it. But again, I respect the board's decision. I get it as, um, you know, a business owner down there. So I, I understand, but I'm personally okay with the, with the time difference.
Thank you. I'd like to go to the public comments. Do we have any, uh, public comments on this item?
Vasily Fackless, nine twenty-nine Oakview Road, and, uh, we own one thirty-ninety Tarpon Avenue. And first, I do want to commend the city and the Merchants Association and Carol and Reggie and their crew because they do work hard and the events are successful, and I support the events. My concern is the, some of the logistics of the events, and I think, I do think there needs to be some better communication with us, with all of us, so we can kind of just sit down and discuss it together and maybe come up with some other additional ideas for, for logistics. Because my concern is if it's three-thirty that the street's shut down, then there'll be, correct me if I'm wrong, Major Trill, then it will be no parking from two-thirty, correct? Because you do it an hour before.
No, there just could not be any three-thirty when, when it starts. Closing out the road, whatever time they decide. I mean, we, we would sign it ahead of time.
But the signs will, because I've seen, been seeing some of the signs an hour before the closure, and I don't know if that's...
I don't know why it'd be an hour, other than to give a heads up that, because a lot of people push it to the last minute, but I don't, I don't know what you're talking about. So whatever time it is...
Major, would you use the mic, please?
I'm not aware of that. It would be from the time the board decides to shut the road down, uh, it would be signed up ahead of time so they know not to be there at that time. But the problem is then, if they're there at that time, what she was talking about towing cars, and the tow process has to go on, there's normally twenty to thirty minute response time to get a tow truck out there.
Sure.
And get the tow truck out there while the vendors are setting up becomes a logistics problem. Uh, so whatever time they decide, um, I have some other ideas as well, which you're more than happy to afterwards sit down with me on, on, um, concepts on how to make it go a little smoother when the vendors are there. But it would all depend on what the board decides is the closing time.
Because they're, and I'm not, again, I'm not trying to tell the, the police how to do their job. That's whatever you have to do, you have to do. But the, the signs have been saying no parking an hour before the street closure. They were there an hour before the street closure for Snow Place and other times.
But Snow Place is not us. That's a city event.
But either, either way, whatever, I'm not here to argue with...
Mr. Fackless, if you please, direct your questions to the board.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just, the, um, it's, it's just, whatever time the police has to, to, to say no parking, that's what they have to do, and I accept that. I just, it just makes it difficult when we make, and I realize it's, it's only one time a month, but some of the, okay, the no parking signs have gone up an hour earlier. And if, so that's, would be a little earlier than that. But vendor parking has become a little bit of a concern, too, because people come and park. Some of these vendors are supposed to be there at a certain time. Well, they come and they park in the parking lot and they fill up those spaces early because they want to be first out to set up their, their, their wares. And I understand that, but then again, that's logistical issues because when, for the businesses that are still running and we have appointments going on, there's no parking for that time. So if, maybe if there can be some better logistical issues on parking for the vendors, because we've also had vendors that have come up and pulled right in front of, of the handicap spaces and sat there and waited because they had a handicap placard, and they were going to wait before the street was closed up. And they said, you can't tow me out of here. I'm, I'm handicapped. So I'm just, I'm just saying some of those logistics need to be worked out. I know it's not going to be perfect. But also, I would like to see more exposure to the brick and mortar businesses because although we want the vendors to do well, of course, we want a win-win for everybody. But this, there has to be some precedence to the brick and mortar businesses. We're the ones that are paying the taxes. And I can tell you, our taxes went up considerably. And so those are, those are some concerns of, um, and I'm all for it because it helps promote it. But there's got to be some concerns on, you know, when everything is going in, in the middle of the street, but the businesses, it's like the party's in the fishbowl, but we're out of the fishbowl. So these are just some concerns of mine, and I'm sure we can come together and work this out for its, so it's beneficial for everyone. And I want it to succeed, and I support this. So those are just some of my concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Fackless, hold on one second, please. Uh, we all agree that, uh, you know, this is a, a great event for the seat of Tarpon Springs and for the businesses. It seems like we have a communication issue between the merchants and some of the businesses. Is it possible that we kind of work together on that? Are you part of the association, that you can work with them?
I am a member, um, and unfortunately, I didn't find out about this till just the other day. So I, I, and I'm not, everybody's busy. I'm not pointing fingers. I just, I would have wished we had a little communication earlier, just so we could talk and maybe some of the, the businesses that are affected by the early closures, maybe we can sit and have a cup of coffee and discuss it. That's my, you know, so we can come to a nice resolution. And then, um, because I, I didn't know about it. And, um, that's all. And then the, you know, the businesses, again, that are, that are taking the time and spending the money to stay open because when that shuts down for several hours, you're doing no business while everything is getting set up. So anyway, I'm, I'm willing to, to, to do what it takes to make this successful. I just, there are just some logistical concerns that I think we can work out. I know we can. That's all.
Thank you. Comments on this item? Are there any other commission comments?
I'll make a comment. Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'll make a comment regarding the parking. I do think that the parking is as much or more of an issue than the, uh, than the setup time. Um, and in reviewing the application, I see that the location for designated vendor parking is public parking lots and side streets, which is the same, uh, parking listed for attendees. So I do think that, um, we need to select an area that's more so designated specifically for vendor parking versus just public parking lots and side streets. And I think Major Trill said that he had some ideas regarding some logistics and some parking. So, um, I don't know that there's a rush to approve this tonight. If we wanted to have the PD, uh, and the Merchants Association kind of roundtable it and figure out maybe some, uh, better ideas for parking and also some logistical, uh, concepts.
I think it was everybody's understanding that, uh, the parking that the vendors were using was a dog park.
Was what?
The dog park, yeah.
The application says public parking on side streets.
Yeah, it would transport it. And the, uh, the park in town, it should be used for, for customers.
For attendees, yeah. Absolutely.
Commissioner Donovan have a question, comment?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Fackless had the nail on the head as far as just sitting down and talking through this. Um, just something I want to get straight leaving the meeting is, um, you know, sunshine law, you know, me and the mayor can't go sit down and grab a cup of coffee with just them or something like that. So who wants to go forward with this and just carry it and set up a meeting? I'd be willing to just sit down with Mr. Fackless, any downtown businesses being affected that would like to. The PD, Merchants Association, and we can just kind of talk it out. But I think it's, I think we should make it clear just who we want kind of spearheading this one and going and sitting down with them.
That's the role of the city manager in this situation. Um, that it'd be up to the city manager to do that, in my opinion.
Yeah, it is a city manager's job to do that.
One of us could be there as well, though, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
But that's what we got a city manager for.
Know what we have a city manager for. I understand that. I, I just think it'd be good if the board could have a representative there as well.
I don't have any issue with Commissioner Donovan attending.
Cool. Thank you. Let me know, Mr. City Manager.
Carol, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
No, I, uh, we suggest, um, to our vendors to park elsewhere. It is very hard, and just for Snow Place, we thought we had a lot, we had permission to park there, and then they gave it to somebody else. So it is really hard. I mean, it's a good thing and a bad thing that everything is filled. But we do have epiphany that there is no parking. We have other events, not just first Fridays, that is difficult for parking. We can suggest, I do try to rent other people's parking lots, um, but sometimes they're in use and we can't. So I don't know, um, our vendors. We would have to change, um, our commuter bus that we have at the Splash Park because it runs for, um, the public, not for vendors. So that would be a whole other thing of how we would get the vendors from the Splash Park down to Tarpon Avenue.
Mayor, I'm supportive of the tabling also, and, uh, talking about the parking for the vendors, setup time. And it, it's not just Mr. Fackless also. There's other business owners that I've talked to, more than just one in the downtown area. So just so we're clear, it's not just Mr. Fackless here speaking. There's multiple people that it affects that have people come to their businesses that they basically lose business or that to chase people out of their business because of the parking situation. So, um, again, full support of first Friday, and again, thank you for your partnership with the city and marketing.
Just so you know, we sent, we had a meeting November twenty-fifth, so all the merchants that would have affected downtown were invited to the meeting. A lot of them did not come. And they all know my number, Reggie's number, and Sherry's. So people, and they do get a letter say, stating what's happening, so they could call us because they do call us for a lot of things. But it's all up to you guys. If you want first Fridays, fine. You don't want first Fridays, that's fine also. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Need a motion? For seven B?
Motion for seven B to table the item until there's a follow-up meeting with the Police Department present in the meeting regarding logistics and public, uh, parking for vendors.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Merrill Lohuzis.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, I need a motion for seven A.
Was there any action on that, uh, question? Motion to approve.
Second.
Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Merrill Lohuzis.
Yes. We're now going to item number nine. Yes. We're now going to item number nine. Cool.
Nine for me, Mayor. Uh, nine for me, Mayor, was just regarding the funding source. Um, I always find it helpful to see how we're gonna pay for things and I see, uh, maybe if Ron's here, the, uh, funding is an account number and then it says lift station. The other one is an account number and then it says water wells. Uh, and I was just curious, Ron, as it relates to the funding of, of number nine, uh, the SCADA system, uh, which is kind of funny actually, but, uh, so in terms of the funding, we have an account that's actually titled lift station and an account that's actually titled water wells?
Uh, yes. If you want the account number, it's four oh two forty.
Oh, I see the account.
It's on there.
Oh, it's okay.
He just wants to know you've got a name of them that sounds like a funny name for an account.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's the lift station account.
So there is actually a lift station account that's.
There's a separate department for lift stations, correct.
Which comes from where?
Out of the Water and Sewer Fund.
Got it. So essentially it comes from Water and Sewer. This is just a sub-account.
Yes, correct.
Got it. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other public com, any other commission comments on nine?
No.
Any public comments on item number nine? Motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusza.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the special concern agenda, but before we go to that, I'd like to remind to everyone that during our, uh, Board of Commissioners meetings will be no cheering, no clapping and it's, in the, um, during the debate and all, all remarks should be addressed to the BOC as a body, not to individual. Uh, item number twelve is to authorize execution of contract with Swiftmont for toilet debate program grant.
And Nick Macris would give the presentation?
Good evening, all. For the record, I'm Nick Macris, project supervisor in the city's project administration department. It's my pleasure to be here tonight in front of you, seeking approval to enter into an agreement with the Southwest Florida Water Management District to help implement the city's toilet rebate program. And this will be a water conservation incentive project that will make available 100 rebates to our city water customers. Each participating city water customer who replaces an older, less efficient toilet fixture with a new, the high efficient, lower flow model will be eligible for up to a hundred dollar credit off their water bill with a limit of two rebates per water customer. By executing this agreement with, the city will then be eligible for cost reimbursement of up to 50% of project costs, up to $10,000. The total project cost is estimated at $20,000. And this grant funding is made available through the district's cooperative funding initiative program, a fantastic grant opportunity that we participated in the past, um, that city staff applied for and was awarded. As you know, the city is dedicated to our water resources and this water conservation project strengthens that component of our city mission. Additionally, it also helps us help our water customers with a great way to save water and in turn save money off of their water bill. It's also a true, a tremendous way to build a more resilient water supply for the city as it will save about a million gallons, approx, approximately a million gallons. It's actually, uh, 929,000 gallons, uh, per year. And that breaks down to about 10,000 gallons per year per customer for each fixture rebated or, and replaced. In conclusion, this, this phase will be the first and hopefully many additional successful phases and we are anticipating strong participation, um, by our water customers and achieving full implementation. I'm proud to be managing, managing it for the city. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the project.
Thank you, Mr. Macris and Mr. LaCouris. I think this is, uh, uh, very nice to be able to help our residents, uh, and also to conserve water. Mr. LaCouris, is there any way that we can surge and see if any grade is available to help financially the residents to switch from the septic tank to the new sewer that we have just installed on the East Lake?
Yes.
I believe that, uh, Senator Hooper is working on something like that. So if.
He's working on. I haven't heard it go anywhere, but we'll put it on the list for grants committee.
Yeah, just keep an eye on that.
To keep an eye how that progresses to our legislature.
Thank you. Commission comments? Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, Nick, thank you for bringing this forward. How is this gonna be marketed to the residents?
We're actually finalizing right now, um, some trifold brochures, uh, mail insert, uh, bill inserts, flyer, as well as doing a press release and posting that on the city website, uh, once, once we get full kickoff of the project.
Okay.
So actually promotion and, and education materials is one of the line items in the project. So that is cost reimbursable as well.
Great. Um, so the grant pays for half of the installation. Is it resident pay for the other half or the city pay for the other half?
Cost reimbursement, uh, program. So essentially the, the, the customer pays upfront, um, and it is up to a hundred dollars. If, if a customer chooses a toilet that only costs, um, eighty dollars, it's, it's gonna be a rebate of eighty dollars.
Okay.
But then, um, we then issue a credit to the, our water customer and then seek reimbursement from the Water Man, Management District, um, as a cost reimbursement.
And does the credit go through the water bill then? Is that what it is?
The credit goes through the, yeah, customer's water bill.
Okay. Um, and I saw there's only one authorized installation company to do this. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, they've got a, a corner and a little niche market, uh, with this. Um, it's the, we're actually, um, really maximizing efficiency here, um, by utilizing a third-party, um, company, a vendor to, um, to actually help us with the administrative part of, and part of the project. They're gonna ensure the eligibility there and as well as, um, another contractual obligation that is, um, part of the, our contract is a follow-up inspection. So, um, city staff is not reimbursable. So we're actually partnering up with this third-party vendor to, um, provide those services for us. So essentially we're, we're getting, we're freeing up some staff time as well as getting paid for half of that.
What's a toilet cost, you know, install?
Couple hundred bucks.
Couple hundred.
Oh, installed?
Yeah.
To install right about now? About a hundred dollars or so.
Hmm. Okay.
And so, and also the, the fixture itself is a hundred dollars. Um, for the installation, the, the homeowner has the option. If you're a do-it-yourselfer, you can, you could do it yourself.
Okay, that's an option then.
Or you can, yes, you can hire a plumber as well.
Thank you for that information. Um, obviously we know we have our own water, or the city has our own water plant. Um, water is a scarce resource. Uh, it costs money to make gallons of water. Uh, if this is a million gallons a year in savings, that's a significant amount of savings. And we might want to look after, uh, this program runs up as a grant, we might want to look at funding it ourselves as a city, um, if there's an opportunity there from the water fund too, um, just because that's a significant amount of savings. Um, there's one other question I had to.
I could supplement and, and add to that. Um, this rebate program is, is also eligible to commercial, um, water users, um, who hasn't, have an account with the city, not just residential customers. Um, and that being said, um, typically, you know, commercial accounts, businesses would have, depending on the business, would have more frequent, um, use of the facilities, put at that. And so therefore the savings would be probably greater. So this primarily, the savings that we estimate is primarily just using residential fixtures.
Great. Uh, city manager, I'm not too, I'm not well-versed on, um, codes for toilets, um, but is there some type of requirement that low flow is required, um, when you do a new installation, a renovation or a new construction? Or is it just, are only low flows sold now? I, I don't, no idea.
I don't know.
Okay. I mean, that'd be interesting to know.
I, I can add it. Yeah, I did a little research too. So essentially, um, we're not gonna replace a toilet just because somebody doesn't like the color of their toilet and they want to remodel their, their bathrooms. So it has to be a, an older, high, high-flow toilet. So typically it's about three five, 3.5 gallons per flush. The newer models right now are about high efficiency, are about 1.28 gallons per flush. So the building code, the building and the plumbing code in 1995 requires all new buildings, all new fixtures installed to be high efficiency toilets. So for the most part, the, most of the, these rebates will be going to older homes, um, to try to get those water savings.
Great. Thank you.
Any other commission comments? Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? You know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair will obtain the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Jacob was the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Mayor LaHusza.
Yes, thank you. Item number thirteen is the Gateway Signs Project Status Report, Staff Report.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and I'm here tonight to discuss the Gateway Signs Project. Um, since, uh, your backup was published, there've been some updates and some new information that I've received. Um, and to capture and summarize those changes, I put, and to kind of put them into context with previous discussions, I, um, I put together some slides to present to you tonight. There's hard copies in front of you and I believe they were emailed out earlier today. Uh, so I will present these slides here and, uh, if, if you didn't get them, Michelle, make sure you get the PDF tomorrow.
I have.
Okay. Um, I also did add one more slide at the last second that didn't make it in. So do you mind? I need to give you something to do tonight, Major. Thank you. Um, I'll start with, um, the first alternative, which was the one I presented to you back in October. This is the one that, um, that we've, was rejected by the board back then, but this is what those signs looked like. Um, and so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on those, but I just wanted to show where we started. Uh, in your backup memo, um, I took the comments that were provided, uh, at the October meeting and did our best to sort through them. Nick and I, um, put together a concept of, of what you had envisioned for this. Um, a couple of the examples of the changes were increasing the size of the signs in general, um, increasing the lettering size, adding some, uh, brick borders and more brick emphasis, um, and several other changes, aesthetic changes. Uh, that's what those looked like. Um, going, going back through them and I had a phone call from Commissioner Carr who, uh, helped me with the interpretation of what we were gonna do with sign B. Uh, it appears that maybe we got the copper and the, and the white borders backgrounds switched, uh, switched, excuse me. So if you look at what I've got on the screen there, um, option B1 shows a white, kind of, uh, creamish white border background behind the sponge helmet and the copper behind the words Tarpin Springs. Um, if, if we swap that, um, we put the copper behind the, the sponge helmet and the white border behind Tarpin Springs, which makes the word, I think the words more visible in Tarpin Springs and the, uh, the copper, um, there with the established 1887 on that screen. Um, there was also some discussion in October about the, um, the copper patina. And so I, I, I wanted to kind of capture what that might look like on that sign. Um, I just grabbed a copper patina texture and, and put that in, in place of that background. Just kind of get an idea what that might be if we went with a real copper. Um, you know, think of like Statue of Liberty. That's that kind of copper sheen you get with, uh, oxidation from, from, uh, real copper. Um, so that's where we are with the, um, the adjusted alternatives. That's these two signs here. Uh, option A2, the horizontal version, uh, in which you'd, uh, we want to put four of these in. And as a reminder, we're looking at those to be installed on northbound US-19 and alternate nineteen and southbound US-19 and alternate nineteen. So north and southbound on both major thoroughfares. And then the type B vertical sign, this to be on Tarpin Avenue at US-19, one on each side, on the north side and the south side. Um, so that's alternative two. Um, what I wanted to talk to you about is, uh, in, in your cost estimate, um, is the different construction options that we have to, to make these things happen. Uh, we can, we can do them in concrete and brick. We can do them in something called HDU, which is high-density urethane. Um, and we could do something called EPS or expanded polystyrene. That's a fancy word for, for styrofoam, which is the brand name. Um, any of those are, are feasible. There are signs all over the place made of these types of materials. And I'll go into some of the costs on those here coming up, but this is a couple of examples of HDU. Um, this is, these, these look like brick and concrete, but this is in fact a, a, a very high-density, uh, type of foam. Uh, you can see it's kind of a monolithic, uh, pre-made structure. It's put, mounted on posts and that's kind of what it looks like when it's installed. Um, the existing signs we have out there now are this material, HDU, those, uh, HDU panel boards. Uh, an EPS, the, these, uh, expanded polystyrene looks like this. This is, uh, photos taken inside a shop of a local vendor. Um, they were gracious to provide these. You can see that, that these are, these are actually hand painted. This is, um, uh, polystyrene. Uh, and again, they're mounted similar kind of monolith the same way as the, uh, HDU ones I just showed you. So, um, a third alternative was asked, I was asked to, to, uh, discuss was, um, actually just replicating the existing boards we have there. These, these panels we have out there now are, uh, four feet tall by 12 feet wide and they're, they're mounted on, on posts in these locations. Um, I, I took the liberty of expanding this, taking some of the input that you had given me before, uh, and, and looking at making them 50% larger, um, same width, um, but a little bit taller, uh, so that we could fit more lettering in. And the extra page that I passed out to you is this slide, uh, this afternoon. I thought, well, maybe if I'm gonna discuss this, I should probably try to give you a visual of what those might look like if we did something in that size range. Uh, we could do that with or without the sponge helmet. And what that says is, "Welcome to Tarpin Springs, sponge capital of the world, established 1887," which were some of the elements that you'd, you'd asked me to include in the signs in October. So to round this back up, um, with the costs, we had alternative one, which was eliminated. This is the one from October. We have alternative two, which comes in three possible flavors, if you will, a, a brick version, um, with a total of six signs coming in right around $208,000. Uh, an HDU version, high-density urethane with faux bricks, uh, also six of those coming in right around $96,000. And then, uh, the revised, uh, design with the EPS foam, the polystyrene, again, six of those units coming in around $92,000. And then lastly, the third alternative, which would be to simply replace the big panels we have out there now, the four by twelves with, uh, six by twelves, um, and making those, uh, out of HDU. Those come in right around $32,000 for six signs, um, all of the same layout. Uh, again, so to round it back out, we're looking at alternative two in either brick, HDU or EPS. So either way we do it, it would look like this. Um, and then alternative three, replicating the existing, uh, which would look something like this, depending on your input. But that's something I put together for us to be able to talk about that tonight. So, um, I'll put that cost estimate back up and, uh, I'll stop there for questions, Mr. Mayor.
Bob, thank you again for all your work and all these options that you provide us. This is actually in the third meeting that we'll be discussing these signs. And, uh, to me, I think it's very important that we do the signs and we do them right the first time. First impression of our visitors will be the Gateway Signs. So it's very important that we do them right and they look beautiful. Uh, I think I will support to use brick as we discussed during the workshop and the, the previous meeting. We don't need to redesign it again. We spent enough time doing that. Um, this is what I like to do and use the, uh, using the brick and do it right. If we can't afford to do them all now, Mr. LaCouris, I don't mind if we do some now and some next year or we use any money to complete the whole project.
You just understand and you need to remind them of, of the process. You've told them all that stuff and you show the prices. But as far as what we've got budgeted, we've only got a neighborhood of $40,000 budgeted.
That's, that's correct.
So right now you've got $40,000 of money to work with. Um, and any, any of those choices you go to that are higher, that means we have to find the, the money elsewhere, which.
Yeah.
Which is why the choice of the 96 or the 91 or the other one are probably, um, Ron and I finding 50,000 is probably doable. Finding a neighborhood of 150,000 is probably not doable. Again, you'd have to do a phasing in of them. Then you'd have to, we'd have to talk about how we're gonna phase them in, which ones we're gonna do first if we go with the other ones. So that's another item we have to, to consider tonight.
Yeah, I think we ought to use the, the real wall, uh, brick instead of using foam and all that fake, uh, uh, walls there. This is, you know, that's what we're really gonna give the first impression to the city. Uh, we need to do it right the first time. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mean ordinarily I would definitely support a superior product. Um, but as it relates to costs, you know, it might be wise to seek a more cost-effective option. Um, generally I wouldn't be a, a fan of the foam at all. Uh, but, you know, for approximately half the price, you know, we could afford to have these signs for 10 years and then if we needed to replace them in 10 years, we would still be on par. Uh, as it relates to the design, um, I definitely like the, for the vertical signs, I think it's the, yeah, B2. As it relates to the design, I definitely like the, for the vertical signs, I think it's the, yeah, B2. And I think I like A2 for the horizontal sign as well. So I mean, those would be my design choices. And then in terms of cost, the HDU, that's the foam, correct?
Yeah, it's a high-density foam, and it is the same material that the existing signs are made of.
Same material.
Yeah, it's almost like, it's almost the density of wood. You can work it like wood.
And the lettering and everything like that is very dense?
Yeah, it's all carved out of that.
So in terms of vandalism?
I think low risk.
Low risk?
Yeah.
Is that what you would recommend, Bob?
I'm not here to make a recommendation.
I want it on record.
Don't get me in trouble.
Yeah. No, I mean, I'm good with the A2 and the B2, you know, and I could be persuaded into the HDU brick in terms of cost, you know, and to see it sooner than later. I don't, I don't want to necessarily wait, you know, I don't want to phase it for a two-year project for some gateway signs. I think it's important to go ahead and get them up sooner rather than later.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. I think Bob, you did a great job taking all of our comments from previous meetings. So option A2, the "Welcome to Tarpon Springs," looks great. Again, the B2 looks good as well. I don't know if "Established" needs to be as big as proposed. It's pretty large, but I'm not going to fight over that.
Concepts, yeah.
I would, I think the mayor's in the right path. If we're going to spend the money to do this, I think we should do it right to begin with, with bricks, something that's solid, that's going to last longer. I know we've replaced the signs before in the past, and hurricanes have come through in the past and blown signs and broken signs. So I do have concerns there. And I recall, I do remember the ones on 19 actually being replaced, maybe five years ago or so. And then the ones on alter 19 are gone because they blew away or broke somehow. With that, though, I think the bricks are going to last forever. I don't have a problem with the funding wise. We currently have appropriations for the state requesting close to $800,000 to $1 million for the dredge project that's earmarked for penny, excuse me, penny dollars. Then there's also a significant amount, or not a significant amount, but we have a good amount of open positions too in the city that we could use some dollars. When we don't have staff sitting in those positions, we can use those dollars as well. So I don't doubt the creativity of our finance and city manager to come up with the funds. I think you all could do that. But I would support the brick look for sure, and the copper behind the sponger helmet, and then just the white, I think it was like lime, was it limestone we talked about? The limestone coloring or the lighter color behind Tarpon Springs. So thank you for bringing this back.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Bob, if you would, could you go to the cost comparisons one? Can I just get a quick rundown on where the rest of the board is at? So it looks like the mayor and Jacob, you guys are in on revised design using brick for the alternative two, correct?
Correct.
And then Vice Mayor, which one were you in on?
I mean, I could go either way. Like I said, ordinarily, I would be a proponent of a product that had more longevity.
Okay, thank you, yeah. I just want to get that clear straight in my head. First, I just want to thank the board and staff. You know, we've been working on this, like the mayor said, for over three meetings now. We've been working really hard on it. Upon seeing the initial price, kind of the sticker, the sticker shock of it, I do think we should just take a quick step back and determine whether it's worth it. I mean, I don't want to break our budget on entrance signs, and I think replicas of the existing signs looks just as good as any of our other designs. You know, just because we worked hard on an idea doesn't always mean it's the right one. So I just think it's too tempting with the alternative three, which I genuinely think looks good. I don't think that's a wrong way to go. But again, for that price, you really can't beat it.
So we get this straight, you want to keep the same signs we have now?
Yes, sir, yeah. I'd like alternative three. Yeah, well, I don't want to keep them. I would like to replicate the existing ones, either in this new one that Bob just presented, or replicas of the actual, the blue and gold ones.
What is that, just to be supply wood on there? Is that what that is?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
It looks like just to be supply wood, is that what that is?
No, it is HDU, mounted on four-by-fours.
On four-by-fours?
Right.
That's cheap. Okay.
Mayor, can I make another comment?
Sure.
Do you mind? There's a couple of things is, the gateway signs really say, like when you come into a city, and the mayor talked about it earlier, touched on it, it really sets the precedence, like when you're coming into the town of what you're coming into. The city of Clearwater has a large entrance sign on Courtney Campbell. I think they paid about $600,000 for it. It's a bit steep, in my opinion. But at the same time, Tarpon Springs has a character of being historic, has a character of being different than Holiday, being different than Palm Harbor. And I think this really gives that story of being a historic town, unique character, and the signs that we've talked about. So with alternative three, I appreciate where you're going towards from a fiscal standpoint. I don't see longevity lasting, and I think you're going to see replacement. It doesn't really speak to the volumes that we're looking for, for the character for our Tarpon Springs. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, and again, I mean, if we're going to cut down on something, it should not be the, you know, the signs, the gateway signs that people going to see when they're coming into Tarpon, when they're driving by. This is the way that they're going to see, so. I'd like to hear from the public, have any other ideas.
Lead protest 901 Bay Shore Drive. Let's not go cheap. We're not a cheap community, gentlemen. And I've been where you are, and I know you can find the money. Don't pull the wool over anybody's eyes. You can find the money. The city manager's giving me a dirty look, but I know it's there.
Not a dirty look, you know my dirty look.
But we need something classy. Article is very classy. We are a classy community. You drive down the street now, our little signs that we've put on the posts. If you're not going 10 miles an hour, you can't read them. They're too small. We've wasted money. Brick is the way to go. You read in the paper on construction condos, houses that have been built with styrofoam, what's happening through weather, the sun, the heavy rain, the mildew. They're replacing a lot of it. It doesn't stand up as well as brick. I agree with the mayor on the brick. It's richer-looking. We're not a country city anymore. We're a big town. Let's go classy and let the people who come down the highway know that we're a good community and we have good taste. Personally, I like alternative two. B, A looks like it came from the cemetery. They all look like that, that are that way. We're not the cemetery. We are a jazzy, growing community. And let's be a little classy with what we pick up and get some credit for doing something good and nice for once.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments of this item? Here none. Back to us.
So what I'd suggest to the board, if you're going to go that way, I would suggest you authorize at first for us to look at the B2 signs, with the estimate. Now again, hopefully bids will come in lower, but you're looking at 60,000 to 70,000 more than we've got budgeted. I'd like to proceed on those now and move forward because I can do the other 92,000 or whatever. You know, there's going to be, there's going to be need to a little bit looking in the budget if that's the way you go. So if you like the look of, if you like the look of the ones that are going to be on our entranceway of Tarpon Avenue, you know, I'd like to be searching for the first 70 to make those two go through. And as you say, hopefully we'll know soon on some of those projects that you talk about. If the state takes the funding, then you have some penny money and some stuff freed up to do that. But I would suggest your direction be, if you're going to go with the expensive ones, let's work on those horizontal-style ones for Tarpon Avenue first. The one by Anderson Park that you see up there, we can cut some bush and make that look fine for now. The other one's been gone from the other end. So I would suggest, you know, you have me look now, and as we, hopefully some opportunities, and we hear some good news and some other monies freed up, then we'll go after the other type signs if you approve them. That would just be one game plan that I would suggest, the phasing them in.
So we do the B2 right now, and then the others probably in a couple of months, you think?
Hopefully, we'll get the breaks that you've talked about. Well, some money freed up with some commitments from the legislature.
I've got a compromise to that, if you want to hear.
Yeah, sure.
I think that the alternate 19 signs are, to a degree, more important than the horizontal signs on US-19, only because when you're on alternate 19, you're actually like going through the center of town. If we look at constructing the bases with some in-house resources, could we do the two vertical signs and two of the horizontal signs?
I don't know.
What do you think about that, Mayor?
I had a thought that what we could do is put the whole thing out to bid, and we'd have itemized line items, or we could break it out with additive alternates so that if the bids come in where someplace we can afford two, three, four signs, then we can work with the contractor to accept those particular line items. That might be a way to approach it. Because what I've given you are just estimates of costs. I've not, you know, these are not bid numbers, of course.
I mean, if we reduce the number of signs from six to four, that's an automatic cost savings.
Of course.
And then if we can further break out the estimate, and if we could save some money, like let's just say with the bases, doing the bases in-house.
I see. Yep, we can construct a...
How much can we mark?
A bid that way.
I'm not sure. I don't have the people here to see that we can, we can do that.
Yeah, but we know our town, we can do it.
Mayor, I've got one comment too. Maybe we can make a recommendation too, is that, and I brought this up to you, Mark, about having two separate bids, because you've got the sign element, and then you have the construction element of the brick and mortar that Vice Mayor was talking about potential staff doing. It could be too that we do two different bids, one for the sign element that would be put onto the brick, and then one's actually the base being built with the brick as well. So it could be three different options that you look at to evaluate on where we move from a bid standpoint. Because if you go, if a sign contractor takes this, they're going to go out and find a contractor to build the base. They're going to mark it up, and then the city's going to pay more for it at that point. So I think it's probably prudent to do them either separately or what Vice Mayor was talking about, trying to use some in-house for the concrete work.
Again, we could, we could structure the bid to include a structural base first. That's a way we could do it, and then it gives us the opportunity to break it out based on what our budget will afford. I understand what you're saying. I'd like to avoid kind of mixing in-house versus contractor work. I'd rather have a single point of responsibility. It kind of makes projects run a lot smoother. But there's ways we can, we can break, structure the bid to phase things in, based on our budget.
Okay, I guess we can actually approve the design using the brick if we have consensus on that, and you take it out to bid. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, Mayor, just one more thing. I think I'm on the losing end of this one, and I'm okay with that. I just, I don't think using the cheapest option necessarily makes you a cheapskate or that we're cheaping out on it. I think sometimes, you know, it just makes the most financial sense, and it works out. I genuinely believe that alternative three looks good and would look good out there. But it doesn't look like that's going to happen.
Just an advice, the cheapest price is now was the best price. Need a motion?
Is there any more on the, could you put back the two signs we've agreed to? We've already talked about the EST being a little smaller on the right one. We talked about it being too big. Is that right there, lower? Anything else, so we're sure we've got this?
I think the EST should be a little bit smaller than what it is right now. And other than that, I think it's perfect.
I think it's fine.
Looks good just the way it is?
Yeah, so we're going to...
Let's not redesign it again. Leave it alone.
So we're going to, I'm going to move to approve option A2 and B2 as it relates to the design.
Yeah.
And then using a brick construction and the number of signs to be determined based on costs.
Perfect.
Good.
Do you need clarity about the copper, on which side it is on? I just want to make sure we're totally clear.
That's...
B2 has it.
Yeah, B2.
All right.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got it.
Wrong call, please.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Chairperson?
Yes.
Merrill, who's this?
Yes, thank you. Well, tonight we have a long agenda. We'll take five minutes break, and we'll be back soon.
I get possession after halftime.
Did you see this? Float? He went back and did it. That's the back. He built all that. That's good.
Don't you, don't you...
That is awesome. He built that?
We built it.
Damn.
Oh.
Meeting's over right now.
The analysis that Vice Mayor was referring to evaluate initial costs of complete rebuild, it is significantly more cost effective to rebuild this roadway as an asphalt roadway. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was almost more than double the cost to rebuild it as a brick.
Okay. Just a thought while I have it, I think there's a brick under that pavement. I'm not sure if there's a way. I know when they scraped Spring Boulevard by Tarpin Avenue, they were able to rip the pavement to where they got to the brick level. I'm not sure if we're able to do that in this situation and then reuse the brick in other parts of the city. So if you have the turtle that scrapes the top and then you flip the brick over and then you have the good side of the brick that potentially could be used to repair other roads that we have that are currently bricked. Just a thought, I'm not sure really how that could work or if there's any viability at all. The mayor brought up a good point with the benches, the separation in the middle, those are just easier to use with armrests, it makes sense, so thank you for bringing it up, Mayor. There is a reclaimed water line that goes down Banana as well, so I'm not sure if you're able to tap into that for the water.
Which side of Banana? East or west?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I think it's on the west side. Yeah. So just be aware that there's a reclaimed line there. So from the palm tree standpoint, I mean, I support the palm trees. Currently, Washingtonia palms, they grow tall and they grow fast and the canopy is about eight feet wide on a Washingtonia palm. I provided three different options to the board in addition to the Washingtonia palm that was provided by staff. One's a Sylvester palm, one's a Bismarck palm, and one's a Royal palm. The top left is a Sylvester palm and we currently use, or the city, I'm sorry, currently uses two of these three already in plantings in the city. So I just want to bring some other options available. These have larger heads, so they would have more shade than a Washingtonia palm and they're not going to grow as fast and they're going to be, they're going to stand out and be more prominent. A Washingtonia palm on this type of road, it will end up looking like a telephone pole because how fast they end up growing and they'll grow about 60 feet tall and then all you see is the tall thing trunk on the road. So I would recommend one of these three palms. I think Royal palms probably look the best out of all of them, but they do have some cold, excuse me, some cold sensitivity to them. So if we do have a hard freeze, we would have a lot of brown branches and that. So I think that would potentially, that's on the far right, the Royal palm is on the far right by itself. So I think that would probably eliminate that one just from a prudent standpoint, that we wouldn't want to have brown trees in this area. So that leaves the Sylvester, which is the top one, and the Bismarck, which is the bottom one. I think either of these are good options as an alternative to the Washingtonia palms. Both, once they're established, require very, very little water. I think they're a good contrast to the road. So I'm not sure if the board has one that they like more than the other, but I would recommend either of these trees over the Washingtonia palm that's being recommended by staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to keep the tree conversation going, what's the, what's the tree on the bottom, Commissioner Carr?
That's a Bismarck palm, a silver Bismarck is on the bottom and the top one on the far, top left is a Sylvester palm.
Okay. If we decide to go that route, which I wouldn't mind doing, I like the Sylvester palm better. Those silver Bismarck ones, I just, I always see those falling and stuff like that and those fall in right in that area, you know, if it dies or if it's windy or if it's a storm, you know, it could fall on a car or could, I, I don't know, I don't know. I would rather have the Sylvester palm if we do end up going that route. So the benches suggestion, I may have missed that. So you're saying you want an arm bar in the middle of the bench pretty much?
Yes, so somebody can't lay down.
Okay. I'm fine with that. And then as far as the timeline on the project, I know you said we were getting this a little bit earlier, when is this project going to be started and completed? Do we have an idea yet?
After night, we'll probably be, when we update you on our projects, we'll get an update and give an approximate on that.
Okay. And is this going to change drainage at all in the area? Or is it going to stay relatively the same, just updated?
Now, that's one advantage is we don't have to do significant drainage work at all on this.
It all exists.
It already.
It all exists.
Okay. That's, that's all I got on this one and I would support using a Sylvester palm, the top one.
Sylvester, good.
I'm good with the Sylvester.
Sylvester it is.
Bob, did you, just one more thing, did you say that you were going to check on the possibility of a crosswalk on the east side of the Court Street adjacent to Alt 19?
Yeah, that is in DOT right away, so we'll need to work with them about trying to match the existing crosswalk style that we want to do in the rest of the road. If we can't do that, then we'll, we'll have to do something that matches a DOT standard. But they've allowed us to do it in the other locations, I really don't see an issue with, with asking for that.
So it would be three crosswalks?
Three crosswalks, yeah.
Beautiful.
East, west, and the, and the middle.
Are there any public comments on this item?
538 West Cedar Street. I do have several comments to make. I'm a little disappointed with the discussion so far and I'd want to add some, some of my thoughts on it. I very much appreciate the staff efforts and I know they've been thinking about doing this for about three years now, as Commissioner Terapini had suggested, and I'm very happy that we're investing in our city. And to me, this design is a very contemporary design. We're in the heart of the historic district and you've heard me talk about visioning, you've heard me talk about the historic aspect and what we've got to offer, what we want to present to visitors. You did an excellent job of not wanting to go on the cheap with regard to signs out on alternate 19 and US 19. The first comment I want to make is, and it's not clear to me, it wasn't in the presentation, whether this is going to be in part of the CRA, is going to pay for this or is it going to come out of the, the city budget? And if it's the CRA, I know that the utilities are probably going to have to come out of the city budget, but there's, I think there should be some discussion in the CRA if some of that money's going to come out of that. If we're going to replace the entire base and including the utilities, I'm not sure why you don't consider brick. I mean, you heard Mr. Robertson, I know he knows what he's talking about, he said the cost would be twice, but what is that cost? I would hope that for a street as important to this and as important for connecting the downtown to the spring bayou, which I've heard you speak ad in for an item about that, I would hope that you would do a little more information seeking and getting exactly what that's, what those costs are going to be compared to the overall budget cost. Sure, maybe the brick might be cost twice as much as the paving, but it may be 20% of the entire budget with the utility replacement and everything else that you're going to I think there's too many curb cuts and I don't think that perhaps the owners of the large parking lots were asked whether they would be willing to eliminate some of the curb cuts and as I understand, they weren't very cooperative. But I'm not sure why the city wouldn't consider a parking grant to encourage them perhaps, help them repay, repay or restripe and change the circulation on that, therefore allowing the city to go ahead and eliminate some of the curb cuts and increase the amount of parking. I know that's been discussed in the past, but I certainly wouldn't give up on it that easy. I would have a heart-to-heart discussion with each one of them and ask them what it would take to close the curb cuts. In any case, I'd like to have a little, I'd like to see a little more vision on the part of the commission with regard to this since it's in the heart of the historic district. I, I think that you're just, the, the discussion I'm hearing tonight is just making it too easy for this project. It needs to be worked on and it needs to be very well thought through with some visioning. It's in the heart of the historic district. Thank you.
The historic district, you need to look at bricks. First of all, when you lay your bricks, drainage is better. When it rains, how it drains down the street, goes into the soil, close to the bayou, close to our waters. It's a cleaner way to have your street with the rains and the storms. That I learned from being on the board. Also, by putting bricks, your maintenance and your repairs aren't going to be as much as if you put the other material there. It doesn't hold up as well as the bricks. And the curbing, we need to use the granite. Now, the city should have a stockpile of granite with all the roads being fixed, especially the ones down in Greettown. All that granite should have been picked up and stockpiled to use in our historic district. I hope we have it. If we don't, we have a crime going on because you can't buy it anymore. And I called the city a couple of times, as the city manager knows, reporting people at night, because you know I ride around at night and look at stuff, picking it up. Granite is very, very hard to get anymore. So we should have enough granite to help it work into the historic district of Tarpin Springs and the fruit section and all to put the curbing there and dress it up and make it more historic as we want to keep it town, downtown. So I hope that the city will take the granite situation into consideration in putting back into the curbing. Because years ago, we made a rule that the city had to maintain and keep all granite that was removed when they had to do roadwork and they didn't want it anymore and it was never rescinded. So we should have thousands of dollars someplace in good, hard granite that you can't get anymore and let's utilize it on that street and do think about the bricks. Environmentally, the bricks are better than what you want to put down. So let's keep our town beautiful.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Here none? Any other commission comments? None, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
With the Sylvester palm, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number 15, is to authorize settlement of lien for 1221 East Court Street lien. Seat attorney, if you present this item.
In an effort to collect an outstanding account, I contacted the property owners that own 1221 East Court Street to inform them that their mortgage is in default, they have a mortgage with the city relative to the sewer impact fee. It's been in default for eight years. Upon making demand upon the property owner, I began a process of negotiation. I have received an offer of settlement on this particular mortgage for payment in full of the principal, which is $3,404.51, wherein the city would waive the outstanding interest to, to get this matter behind us. The property owner is willing to pay that amount and provide it to the city when she receives her refund check from the IRS. She says that she'll have that available no later than March 15th in the year 2020 next year. And so I'm asking for your authorization tonight to settle this mortgage that's in default for $3,404.51. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any commission comments, Vice Mayor Terapini?
Mr. Attorney, this mortgage basically came in the form of an assessment, is that right?
That's correct, sewer impact fee.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none, I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes. Item number 60 is to authorize settlement of lien for 509 Ashland Avenue. Seat attorney, please present this item.
This property that is located at 509 Ashland Avenue has a code enforcement lien on it and a dollar amount of $6,000. The property is in compliance. Property just went through a mortgage foreclosure proceeding. The bank now owns this property, it's Nation Star Mortgage LLC. They're wishing to sell the property. Because our lien hit after the notice of lispendence was recorded in the mortgage foreclosure case, the lien is unenforceable against this property. However, I've negotiated a settlement of $3,500 in return for a partial release. The partial release would release the property and the current property owner, however, the lien would remain against the prior property owner. I think this is a good settlement, it's $3,500, you wouldn't otherwise be able to collect. And so I'm asking for your authorization to issue a partial release for $3,500 on this code enforcement lien.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Commission Carr?
Mayor, just for clarification, in this situation, because the lien is not enforceable, I would support this, but at any time there's a bank foreclosure, I think we need to hold the banks accountable to the top dollar from a code enforcement standpoint because of the lack of upkeep that the banks typically do for foreclosure properties. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, so you're saying the balance of the monies to be collected would be still leaned on the previous property owner?
That's correct. This individual has passed away, would be against his estate. If there are any other non-homesteaded properties or personal property that's in the estate of Euros Bandage, so it would be the difference of $2,500 and change.
And what are the chances of collecting that?
Probably pretty slim.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? The chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved as recommended.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes, thank you. We now go into the ordinance of resolutions, item number 17. This is a resolution 2019-41, budget resolution fiscal year 2020. Seat attorney, if you please, present the resolution.
Yes, I read resolution 2019-41 by title only. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2019-20. That was a reading of resolution 2019-41 by title only.
Thank you. Staff report, Mr. Licorice.
Ron Herring will give this.
Evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Budget resolution 2019-41 is the first budget resolution for fiscal year 2020. It is being brought before you to budget for items that were not previously budgeted for in fiscal year 2020. I've tried to summarize everything in, in the cover letter that's attached there. The majority of the items being brought forward were approved and budgeted in 2019, but not expensed in 2019. And just to try to summarize it, the main items are open encumbrances at September 30th 2019 in the, in the amount of $3,832,138. Donation balances being brought forward in the amount of $197,891. Major capital items budgeted in 2019, but not started in the amount of $2,194,790. And other minor capital operating budgeted in 2019, but not started as of September 30th 2019 in the, in the amount of $1,589,186. And just to say, no general fund, unassigned fund balances being used in this resolution. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Mr. Herring, thank you for the presentation. We have many projects in progress right now from budget last year and I'd like to ask Mr. Licorice in the next meeting or two, if you provide us with a progress report on those projects.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Terapini?
Ron, can you refresh my memory as it relates to Safford slip lining?
That's out of the Water and Sewer Fund, they had, that's a project that was budgeted last year within the, in the Sewer Department there and they hadn't started, they encumbered it, but they hadn't started the project yet, so that's the money for that project.
Relining a sewer line inside, instead of pulling a whole sewer line out, they just reline it and it saves.
It is going on at present time, I believe.
Correct.
North Safford?
Right, that's where they've been working recently, you've seen them down north Safford.
Thank you.
It's good to have a progress report.
Yes.
So we'll learn all about that. Commissioner Carr?
I don't have any comments, no. Thank you.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to get more on the camera system we see on that, on that first page, it just references the camera system. Can you just tell me where that is? Is that what we did? I, I just want to know where that was.
That's the downtown camera system going from the bayou, I think, down to the train depot, library and that area there.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the solar energy goes from the Water Sewer Fund, what does that entail?
That was the, the approved project for the, for the solar energy at the RO plant out there that was approved last year.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just to remind everyone that USF is working with us on this project for designing. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none, I need a motion to approve it.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes, thank you. Next is item number 18. The ordinance 2019-20, proposed charter amendments, this is the second reading. Seat attorney, if you please, read the ordinance.
This is ordinance 2019-20, in ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, submitting the following proposed amendments to the city charter by the Charter Revision Commission to the electors of the city for approval. An amendment to section three, limitation of powers. An amendment to section eight, Board of Commissioners compositions and powers. An amendment to section 11, terms of office qualifications, date of annual election. An amendment to section 13, interference with administration. An amendment to section 14, internal auditor. An amendment to section 17, city clerk and collector, acting city clerk and collector. An amendment to section 18, city attorney. An amendment to section 20, residency. An amendment to section 23, general. An amendment to section 24, emergency purchases. An amendment to section 26, street and sidewalk improvement investment fund. An amendment to section 32, amendments. An amendment to section 33, city hospital, providing that the charter will be amended to incorporate any proposed amendment receiving a majority vote of the electors of the city in favor of such amendment and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2019-20 by title only.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments on this item? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes, thank you. Item number 19 is the ordinance 2019-27, Bozart property sale, this is the second reading. Seat attorney, please read the resolution.
This is ordinance 2019-27, in ordinance of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, submitting to the electors of the City of Tarpin Springs, the sale of city-owned surplus property located adjacent to 308 High Street for its appraised value and providing for an effective date of this ordinance. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2019-27 by title only.
Thank you. This is the second reading. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? The chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes. Item number 20 is a resolution 2019-42, calling for election and approval for ballot language. Seat attorney, please read the resolution.
This is resolution 2019-42, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, calling for the municipal general referendum election to be held in conjunction with the presidential preference primary election to be held on March 17th, 2020, for the purpose of electing two commissioners to serve a term of three years each, providing for establishment of the ballot title and substance for 12 referendum questions sponsored by the Charter Review Commission, amending the city charter and one referendum question to sell surplus property located adjacent to 308 High Street for its appraised value, providing for set election, submitting set referendum questions to the voters, providing for notice to the supervisor of elections and providing for the effective date of this hereof. This is resolution 2019-42 by title only.
Are there any public, are there any commission comments? Vice Mayor Terapini?
Thank you. Regarding the sale of the city-owned property, I would suggest, if possible, Mr. Attorney to have a comma in the 2,728.
What page is that?
Page nine. It says, shall the city sell to Jesse Bozart a 2,728 square foot parcel? I'm just recommending that there be a comma there.
Okay, we'll add that.
Any other commission comments, Commissioner Carr?
I've got one comment, I just want to congratulate Mr. Costa Vaticiotes for not having a candidate filing against him. He is the commissioner-elect for seat two, which is part of this resolution.
Are there any public comments on this item? Chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes, thank you. Item number 21 is the ordinance 2019-21, the application 19-145 LDC amendment, hurricane shelter study. This is the second reading. Seat attorney, please read the ordinance.
This is ordinance 2019-21, in ordinance of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, amending section 122.12 of Article 8 of Appendix A, the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, by providing the correct reference for hurricane evacuation and by providing additional guidance for acceptable hurricane shelter impact study data, data sources, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That was the second final reading of ordinance 2019-21 by title only.
Thank you. Mr. Licorice, do you have a staff report?
Louis, you ready? I don't think we have anything to add from the last meeting, but I'll let him confirm that for you.
That's correct, nothing to add.
Okay. Commission comments?
None.
Here none? Any public comments on this item? The chair will obtain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Call please.
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapini?
Yes.
Mayor Lozis.
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number 22, which is the ordinance 2019-23, the application 18-50, North Lake Estates Pioneer Developers Annexation of 43.54 acres on Keystone Road. This is the second reading and this is a quasi-traditional. The seat attorney will read the title and it will explain the quasi-traditional process.
Mayor Commissioners, ordinance 2019-23, in ordinance of the City of Tarpin Springs, Florida, annexing 43.54 acres, more or less, of real property located on the north side of Keystone Road approximately 0.75 miles from the intersection of Keystone Road and North Highland Avenue and west of East Lake Drive, lying in sections eight and nine, township 27 South, range 16 East, providing for findings and providing an effective date. This, the legal advertising reflects that it was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on November 2nd and November 8th of this year, 2019. I'll read the quasi-judicial procedures. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply the law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence of the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. So at this point, I'd ask if there are any expedited communications or any conflict of interest that need to be disclosed by the commission?
I, I'm in with the applicant and the neighbors and I declared that during the last meeting.
Okay, anyone else?
I've discussed the application with the applicant.
I've also talked to the applicant and I've had individuals reach out to me from the neighborhood.
This is last meeting, I've spoken to the neighbors and I've spoken to the applicant.
Okay, any objections coming from the applicant? No. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go ahead and swear in everyone that's going to speak tonight. Anyone? I want to do them all at once, so we don't have everybody waiting. So anybody that's going to speak tonight, if you could stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. So Mayor, at this point, we'd have city staff make its presentation. Mr. Serna?
Yes, again, this item is for the annexation of forty-three point five four acres of property. This does have associated with it the RPD rezoning, the future land use amendment, and the development agreement. However, this item is for the annexation alone. There's no new information since my last presentation, so I'd just be available to answer any of your, any of your questions.
Any questions from the commission? If not, thank you. The applicant want to make a presentation tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Briefly, Katie Cole with Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant. I would like to confirm that all of the evidence presented at the first reading is incorporated into the item and will be considered by the board tonight. Tonight, your decision's limited to, do you want to expand the city's boundaries to include this property? Questions have been raised by the opponents about this commission's discretion to annex the property, and as the evidence shows, this annexation meets the criteria in your code and in the Florida statutes. Florida statute one seventy-one states that these statutory criteria are provided to meet the purpose of the annexation statutes generally, and your decision to annex is in furtherance of these criterias inherently holds much discretion. Your exercise of this discretion tonight furthers your intention to grow Tarpon, add to its base, and add to its diverse properties and population. We do have our engineer, Mr. Joe Semino, here, as there have previously been questions about some of the utilities, and so he is available to further answer those questions tonight. With that, happy to respond to any questions and reserve any other time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you. Any members of the public would like to make a presentation tonight, that they could step forward, state your name, please?
My name is Steve Ambrosio, twenty-six eighty-four St. Andrews Boulevard. We just heard what quasi-judicial means, and quasi-judicial does not mean because there is information and facts behind it that you must vote for it. Last week, we were told by Commissioner Cyber, I believe her last name is, that she felt for us, she's been in our position, but there was nothing she could do because she had to vote for it. Commissioner Donovan also expressed the same heartfelt appreciation for us. I appreciate both of you thinking of us. But that evidence is flawed, and I will explain that more to you later. Also, Ms. Thomas will explain that to you. So one of my point is that the quasi-judicial does not mean because the rules are there, you have to vote for it. I would also like to add that these homes are roughly two hundred by a hundred, a majority of them. There are bigger ones and there are some, a little, slightly larger than them. That's twenty thousand square feet. If you build a house a hundred by a hundred, that's ten thousand square feet. That leaves fifty percent of land. If you add that thirty-six-foot driveway and a mother-in-law room, where's the water going to go? It's going to shed off and go all over the place. So what I'd like to do at this point is I would like to add into the record the following letter. Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners, three fifteen Court Street, Clearwater, Florida, three three seven five six. December fifth, two thousand nineteen. Mayor and Board of City Commissioners, City of Tarpon Springs, P.O. Box five zero zero four, Tarpon Springs, Florida, three four six eight eight. Read, Annexation Ordinance, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three, North Lake Estates. Dear Mayor Alahousas and Commissioners, it is our understanding that the above referenced application for annexation will be heard at a second and final public hearing on December tenth, two thousand nineteen. Many residents in the surrounding area have reached out to the Board of County Commissioners regarding this year issue. This property is currently located within the East Lake Tarpon Overlay District in unincorporated Pinellas County. This overlay district, adopted within the county's comprehensive plan, was established in two thousand twelve specifically to define the community's vision for the area, protect the rural nature and character of the East Lake area, and preserve the established residential patterns of very low-density development. Additionally, there are specific policies with the county's comprehensive plan that limit density in this area to one-half unit per acre as a mechanism to protect the county's wellfields, discourage urban sprawl, ensure compatibility with the local community's character, and protect and enhance the natural areas. Annexation of this property and development as currently proposed will directly contradict the intent of the East Lake Tarpon Overlay. And as to what the petitioner's attorney just said, in accordance with Florida statutes, chapter one seven one point oh four four, voluntary annexations are legislative in nature and therefore discretionary and not mandatory. The Pinellas County Commission strongly is urging the Tarpon Springs Commissioners reconsider this application and deny the annexation petition to preserve the intent of the East Lake Tarpon Overlay and maintain the character of the area for future generations. Thanking you in advance for your consideration, most sincerely, Karen, Karen Williams-Seal, Chair, Pinellas County Commissioners.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address this application? If so, step forward, state your name, please.
My name is Attorney Terry Thomas. I'm here representing the concerned property owners who live within the East Lake Tarpon Community Overlay, which you've just received a copy of the letter. I would identify that this is substantial evidence to show that the actual staff report and what has changed despite what was represented to you here tonight. They did not receive the county approval pursuant to their section three, paragraph three of the staff report and every other representations made to you under the very first meeting. It is our position at this time that the evidence that was provided to you in the first meeting was flawed and didn't take into consideration those items that later got kind of teased out, and it is your job to be looking at competent substantial evidence. I only need to remind you of the Bezu project that absolutely was overturned through an appellate process, cost the city a lot of money because they did not take into account the characteristics of the walkability in that particular neighborhood. This particular overlay, which I'm going to give you also a copy of the underlying ordinance for the overlay, which is ordinance number twelve thirteen, understand that this overlay that's being discussed in that letter, you can please. Is a state and county determination and or past ordinance. So anything that you guys do here tonight that doesn't take into account the overlay, the overlay is to be able to go on top of the county's comprehensive plan, and you will see within this ordinance, it identifies that it becomes an amendment to the county plan for this particular area. So I know that there has been, I've actually reviewed the tape for the last hearing, and at that time, I noticed that they were certainly saying that the city's underlying plans actually meet, the density plan meets the county's, but that would be in another area that doesn't have this particular overlay. So it's almost deceptive to suggest that you cannot go ahead and, that basically there's no difference between the counties as well as, you know, what they're proposing here for the city. There is a difference when you add in the overlay. That includes differences in densities that particularly, instead of there being a density factor in which you have a one-to-one, just like the city has, this overlay requires a half-house per acre or what would be two acres per home. It is to be able to, just like with Bezu, that ended up getting overturned and will cost a lot of money for the, for the City of St. Pete. It basically says you have to look at the characteristics of this particular area. If they want to build in another one in Pinellas County, then it would be one-for-one. But that doesn't, that completely is intended to circumvent this overlay, and we certainly suggest that that's not appropriate. The other issue is they had identified that they are able to do, under the voluntary annexation, that they had adhered to chapter one seventy-one point oh four four because they said it didn't create an enclave, and also that under one seventy-one oh three one, they have one sentence in the report saying it's contiguous. However, if you look at what the actual section, which is, or the statute, which is one seventy-one point oh three one, which never was discussed in that particular hearing, let me give this to you all, that I'm also entering into evidence. May I ask, I know that, that you can request.
Okay, so point, so what I'd like you to do, every one of those people that would like to donate their time, if you want to step forward, state your name on the record.
Shelley Rogers, two six oh five, St. Andrews, Tarpon Springs.
Joan Hickman, ten forty-nine Royal Burke.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Name? Joanne Hickman, ten forty-nine Royal Burke Dale, in Cypress Run. I release my time.
Ronald Salhany, nine seven three Royal Burke Dale, and I will relinquish my time.
Okay, well, we can stop right there.
Right there.
Maximum time is ten minutes. Clock adjusted. Okay, thank you.
May I start?
Chapter one seventy-one point oh three one, if we can ask you to go to section eleven of oh seven one oh three one, it actually identifies what contiguous is intended to mean by the legislature. Contiguous means that a substantial part of the bounty of the territory sought to be annexed via municipality is coterminous with the part of the boundary of the municipality. The answer here means that there is a specific requirement under legislation that contiguous, something that's contiguous, must mean that a substantial part of the boundary has to be able to meet. We would suggest that there's been no evidence that a substantial part, portion of the boundary does meet the city's boundary. And the reason why we suggest that is basically after looking at what would be the parametrical boundary, it shows that maybe, there's no more, somewhere around ten percent of only one parcel actually does meet that. Ten percent is basically doesn't meet the substantial requirement under the legislation. Now, I can ask, identify that if you don't have a definition legislatively, then you can use Webster's Dictionary as well as Black's Law Dictionary to be able to say what did, was intended from the legislature to be substantial. Well, in answer to that question, that you have Black's Law defines substantial as being significant or large or having substance, and you also have a Webster's Dictionary which says a substantial part of a boundary. They actually go in to say it has to be considerable in quantity, important and essential. Now, there's also case law, which is from the County of Elusia versus Deltona, that talks about whenever you have two parcels, you can't go ahead and say there's, it's continuous if indeed you are actually using a parcel that is not, doesn't border that particular boundary. And that's what they're trying to do tonight. They're trying to take two separate parcels and say you still can meet this definition, but under the case law that's applicable, you cannot use both of those boundaries because one of them is not continuous. You have to have both of them to be continuous underneath this chapter. In addition to that, we suggest that the overlay itself, as you could see in the county's letter, that it's the creation of the East Lake Overlay District in two, in two thousand twelve. That was purposeful, and it was to check the rural nature and character of the area. The annexation contradicts the very intent of what was done seven years ago, and this is from both the state and the county section. There are other issues that I saw that were kind of inconsistent with the staff report and what was actually presented to you all. There was a big question about the accessory housing, which was mother-in-law units. Whenever you start looking at the traffic studies that were provided to you, those were all based on there being only forty-four units. So I can tell you that afterwards, since they asked to go ahead and add the accessory structure, I understand they said, don't count it in the density because that, Pinellas County has determined that that would be a density issue. But in order to be able to represent these issues that they have, that there was approval and that the traffic patterns would be okay, you could see that their afternoon traffic patterns, they said it was up to forty-four, they didn't need a traffic survey if it's fifty, and they can use an additional forty-four, have another additional forty-four resident still, homes in that particular area, and that would be the accessory structure. So I suggest that if they, if you are going to be utilizing their competent evidence or suggest that this is going to be supporting their application, you have to use the additional up to forty-four more, which we don't know what that would do to the fifty traffic survey requirement. In addition to that, same thing goes with that for water volume. They did identify after your questions that these accessory homes are going to have both kitchens and bathrooms. Their analysis that everything would be fine, that there's capacity, was based on incorrect figures that didn't take into these accessory houses. In addition to that, you also have that there was a requirement underneath the, the fire chief's approval that there was going to be two egress-ingress roads to be able to enter and exit the particular property because they needed it for emergency vehicles. I don't know what the absolute status ended up being, but I do know it was told to me that the, the George Street residents were against providing, if they actually privately owned that particular second entrance, that they were going to need to get easements. And unless you have any proof that this has been accomplished, that they would be open to providing the easements, it would not meet the fire chief approval that they put into their own report. So what you have is a staff report, which are representations from the developer, that as long as these, this criterion is met, they meet the criteria to be passed. Unfortunately, if you go back to the report, you see that, wait a second, they didn't meet the criteria, or they are having problems with meeting the criteria. The Planning and Zoning Board, as you know, denied this. They denied the, the application based on the fact that there were too many changes to the local characteristics of that particular area. You had people stand up. Now, they don't have it in findings, so I can't suggest that that was the reason that they made that determination, but they did make the denial. After everyone got up and said, you have issues with the wildlife, you have issues with flooding, you have issues that absolutely need to be taken into account, that had to do with the local characteristics that go completely into the, the overlay in your analysis. And you can't ignore the overlay, so every single one of those people who testified on the first hearing, they testified as competent evidence as to the overlay and the characteristics. So all we can suggest is, is that you have a duty to follow the competent evidence, and under these circumstances and what I pointed out, the best thing we can ask of you guys is to realize the first reading and your first vote was based on information that was inaccurate, that was not, that completely circumvented this overlay commitment, and they did so so that they don't have to meet those requirements for the, you know, density and so forth and the characteristics, and be in a position in which you guys deny it tonight. If you have to delay it, or if you have to go ahead and send it back for these comments to be fixed and then revoted on, that's fine too. Deny it tonight, but if not, you are opening yourself up for an appeal that will be tremendous. I know you have a lot of support from the folks here who are going to be affected people, and I can tell you, under the, this chapter, they have the ability, when they appeal, to get attorney's fees, and every affected person will have that right, and just like Bezu, it will be another class action. I don't think the city has the wherewithal or the desire to be fighting this beyond tonight. tonight. It may, I don't know. I guess we'll have to see if indeed you guys do rubber stamp this and approve it for a second reading. The other issues that I wanted to go ahead and bring up have to do
Two minutes.
With drainage, flooding, property wildlife. I'd like to reiterate one more time that these are issues that are real issues. You're going to hear people tonight talk about it. That should be considered substantial and competent evidence. And it should persuade you all to understand that if indeed you guys don't look into these issues, and there are some irregularities, because I saw the last one, you guys told them, "If you're going to go ahead and have anything that's redundant, you're not allowed to speak," I'm not sure how that would work. I've heard some rumors that one of you guys have conflicts, it's a broker. I don't know if that's true. But if that is true, these are issues that certainly can affect an appeal, that you guys have to really look at before you decide to go ahead and vote for it tonight. Based on the statute, based on the inability to be able to prove continuousness, particularly with two parcels, based on the situation in which you are, the traffic studies, the all the studies that were provided to you in the very first reading did not take into account the accessory units. Oh, one last thing. I know that they have assured you all in the developer's agreement that, "Don't worry, this won't be rented out, there's no way, you only have one utility." I remember hearing, you know, or reading that. The issue, though, is, is that there's no enforcement mechanism necessarily that can, you know, who's going to enforce that? The problem, people go out and they get a sub-meter all the time, and they contract with private folks to provide that. There's no, you will have circumvention of this if you approve it.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the time tonight.
Can she state her name again for the record, please?
Terry Thomas.
Yes, my name is Terry Thomas. I'm with Beckerman Polikoff.
Good evening. My name is Bill Hickman, and I live at 1049 Royal Burke, in Cypress Run. I've been asked by John Meoli and the Board of Council of North County Neighborhoods to speak on their behalf. I was on the Board of CNN for many years, and I worked, personally worked on the enactment of the East Lake Overlay. The overlay boundaries, incidentally, were misdefined the other night, are defined by the East Lake Far District map, and does include the proposed North Lake development, as well as the McAlpin property. On behalf of our North County Neighborhoods, we worked on, worked with our county commissioners and state representatives for a considerable time in order to put in place the East Lake Overlay document designed to preserve the continuity and continuity of the area, and prohibit the kinds of problems we've been talking about these last two meetings. Traffic problems, water discharge, wildlife and wetlands preservation, et cetera. All of these would be impacted if an over-increase in density were allowed to develop. We're not against development. I have lived in Cypress Run for 30 years myself, and have watched various subdivisions grow, build and grow in the East Lake area. Crescent Oaks, Shutter Delok, Woodfield, et cetera, were all properly developed, observing our county land use codes, and staying in compliance with the two acre per household Pinellas County use density requirement. There were no protests, no problems with anyone, since the lower density was observed. Just because a developer meets the requirements for annexation does not mean that the city must grant annexation. But they may grant acceptance if certain criteria is met. Since the new development is seeking to circumvent the county land use codes of one-half unit per acre, we would request that the City of Tarpon Springs disallow this request, and that they will honor the East Lake Overlay, which we spent so much time on, on behalf of the residents in the area that are affected by this development. Thank you.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. You know, one week ago today, the Board unfortunately voted on the wrong side of history, just like in the Walmart thing. You guys were presented with flawed information, and you made the wrong decision last week, just like they did 15 years ago with the Walmart. And then it comes out. And you're going to put the city through this again, really? And then the way the meeting was handled, the attorney was intimidating people. Not you, sir, but the attorney that was sitting right there was intimidating people, telling them not to speak, that they didn't have the right to get up and use their First Amendment right, or speak truth to power. Reprehensible to tell the public that they don't have the right to speak if they don't have anything new? Unbelievable. It's bad enough you put these items at the end of the list so that people can't stay all night. And then you bundled everything together? What is that? You know, when Hubbard, Attorney Hubbard and Yakovone were here, they used to say words like, and you'll remember this, "In an abundance of caution, we should let each item be heard" so that people can speak on each item. Guess what the attorney did last week, man? She bundled them all together so that we could only speak once. We should have been allowed to speak on 19, 20A, 20B, and 21. That's the way we did it in the Walmart days, because they knew lawsuits were coming, and so they did it right. But your firm, sir, did not. Not last week. Opened the city up wide. And so, you have a way to fix it. Nobody has to appeal that thing if you guys do the right thing tonight, vote on the right side of history this time. They gave you enough stuff to hang your hats on. Oh, no, you don't have to vote them in, man. You don't. It's not a forced thing. You can choose to do the right thing. You're free to do the right thing. You're all free to do the right thing. You don't have to vote on the wrong side of history twice. You just learned that you were lied to, essentially. So, you don't have to put up with that. If I was sitting up there, I'd be pretty upset that somebody gave you misinformation. That the meeting was run in such a ham-headed fashion. I mean, my goodness, what? There were hundreds of people ready to speak, and they were terrified. They didn't want to come back to this meeting because they thought they didn't have the right. What kind of country do you think this is? What are you doing? You guys are elected by people, and you're supposed to serve people. Fifteen years ago, three people voted against the right of 300 voices that wanted to speak that night, and many did. But a lot of them couldn't stay all night. We were here till 8:00 AM, all night long. A lot of us stayed. And even when we were working on getting rid of the city manager and replacing that manager with you, we were allowed to speak on every single item. That went on a lot, remember? Beverly was beside herself, because we each got to speak on each little part of it. Anita was there. She got to speak many times on that very item. No facilitator. We didn't want, we wanted this guy. And then, that's how it's supposed to work. That's how it's supposed to work. The people have a right to speak, truth to power. Otherwise, what do we have? So, if nothing else, you should redo it. And if not, just fix it tonight. Vote on the right side of history, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Terry Wetzel. I reside at 2545 Royal Liverpool Drive. I'm not going to ask for additional time tonight. I think everything that needs to be said has been said. There's just a couple things I would like to point out, and I think at the last meeting, I had mentioned that the plan keeps changing. The public doesn't really know for certain what we're looking at. We want the competent evidence, but yet every time something comes up, we were worried last meeting about sidewalks. We have a flooding issue, that the more impervious surfaces you put on that property, the bigger the flooding problem's going to be. We relied upon the developers when asked the question about trees, as to how they were going to handle the development and the trees. What were we told? We were told that every homeowner's going to be able to choose what trees they want to keep on their own lot. I beg to differ. That property is muck. There is no way anything is going to be built there unless every piece of wood on it is removed, and every square inch of it is filled where they're planning to build. I'd like to introduce some photographs of a property that's currently under development now. This is on Anclot Road. That tree, that property was heavily forested, and you look at it now. Look at it now, people. It is barren. A bulldozer went through there and took out every single tree on this property, not saving any. I can tell you that this would never occur in Pinellas County, according to the Pinellas County restrictions and what they require. Again, last meeting, I wanted to point out to you that it's believed that if it were not for the density issue on this property, there's no real reason for these folks to come into the City of Tarpon with this property. We were told last meeting that they're businessmen here. They live here, they work here, their families are here, but guess what? They build in Ozona. They build in Palm Harbor. They build in Hudson. And you know what? We would be happy to have them build on East Lake Drive, but we would be happy to have them build 22 residences, which is what the East Lake Overlay would allow. I ask you to thoroughly consider your decision tonight. And I ask you to do this the right way. Do it the right way for the people who are sitting here, who have been sitting here. We've been coming to these meetings since July, and I think that there is a way to do this development, and there's a way to do it where it would be beneficial to everyone involved. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mark Washburn, 124 East Lake Drive, in Tarpon Springs, Florida, 34688. First, I just want to very respectfully ask that, and I know it's a tight community and a lot of people know each other, for example, I'm probably known as a sea sponge dealer. But anyways, if you have any dealings with Pioneer Homes, Mr. Stammas, Mr. Zoots, just respectfully ask that it would make sense to recuse yourself from the vote. Just want to say a few things. Obviously, we said everything we had to say last week. This development's definitely not compatible with our neighborhood. It would literally double the amount of homes in our area almost, which is just crazy. I also want to say that we would absolutely welcome Pioneer Homes to build under county rules. I think our whole neighborhood would welcome them, building 21, 22 homes on that property. They can be spaced out properly. The lots can be bigger the way they should be. They can preserve more land for the wetlands. One more thing I want to mention, unfortunately, Mr. Parish, I think he's here tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Parish, they own the agricultural lot. It's fully agricultural, and they're right in that waterway where all the water's going to flow to. There was many reasons why the first meeting at the Planning and Zoning, why they voted no on three of the four issues. One of the reasons was because the water study was very specific to that property, but it really didn't take into account anything past where the flow would go. Now, by law, obviously, the flow has to stay the same. But one of the concerns is that Mr. Parish has to provide agriculture. He's fully agricultural. He's a farmer. He has to subsistence his property by growing plants. He's about to, I believe, plant several thousand pineapple plants in his yard, which is directly in the way of where this water would flow. If this impedes his ability to earn a living, that would be a substantial issue. So, again, thank you, and I hope you vote for the right side of history. One more thing, there's this big development on Mears Boulevard in Alt. 19. It's got, next to Helen Ellis, like 260 units, and I work a lot in the city with people here, and everybody's freaking out about that. I mean, they are appalled, upset. The traffic in Alt. 19 is a nightmare. I think it's already rated an F. I don't know if you can go to a G or a Z, because that's probably where it's going to be when this thing gets done. No one wants to take responsibility because that was six or seven commissioners ago. I think this development would be the same thing. This is a nightmare for us, and this will have long-term implications for our neighborhood. And also, no one's mentioned this yet, we, Mr. Stammas has been shopping. There are several lots on Keystone Road that would touch this next property, and we know that he's actively looking at purchasing more properties, including the 11-acre Parker House, which is on East Lake Drive, directly across the street from this parcel that we're talking about tonight. And the plan is apparently to probably demolish the home that's on there, and again, get it annexed and turn it into another 22 homes. This is a nightmare that could end tonight for us all, or this is something that can be a cancer that grows in East Lake, which would be just awful. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Charlie Smith. We live at 2000 North Highland Avenue. We purchased our 10 acres from the McAlpin family, and our property is directly to the west of the proposed subdivision as an adjoining property. They're using our property to be able to annex into the city, because without our property, the annexation would stop, and it would collapse. My wife and I want to go on record in opposition to the application from the Pioneer Developments of America. We request the city commissioners would follow the lead of the Pinellas County Commissioners outlined in the December 5th letter from Karen Seal, expressing that the Pinellas County Commissioners support of denying the applications of Pioneer Developments of America, and preserving the intent of the East Lake-Tarpon Overlay, and maintaining the character of the area for future generations. We would also like to go on record, expressing our concerns for possible violations of the Florida Sunshine Law, because no commissioner should have private meetings or on-site tours with any applicant without all members of the Board in attendance, also without expressing or reporting to the public on any or all of their findings or additional results that they developed during these private meetings. The findings need to be reported at the next public board meeting so the public stays informed, because without this transparency, the public cannot be assured that the community's best interests are being supported. In closing, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to express our opposition to this application from Pioneer Developments. Thank you.
Anita Protas, 901 Bay Shore Drive, Tarpon Springs. Since Mr. Herboski wanted to use my name, I'm going to correct some things. The city lost out with Walmart. That would have long been taxes in the city.
Can you bring the microphone down? Thank you.
It's still vacant there. We really lost out on that one. And after it was over with, it was admitted that it was a wrong step to take. And after it was over with, it was admitted that it was a wrong step to take. Then, about the condos by the hospital, that was locked in by the mayor and the then-city manager. It was locked in and heavily used as mitigation for other areas, what they went to Tallahassee to do. There was nothing that could be done about it to change it. So it wasn't the community that did all of that. It was two women that worked very hard to get that there. And it's documented, and people know it. And Mr. Herbowski can remember times when he was on the other side also. So let's set the record straight and not use people's names without giving the background on it. You are in a position to do what you think is best for the community of Tarpon Springs. I will go see Karen Seal. I'm surprised that she took a stand here when there have been times when we needed her to take stands and she would do it for so far north. I don't know their plan, but if it's denied, what's going to happen to the next group that comes in? What's going to go on and on and on? You have the right, with your planning and zoning, to decide what you want to do and what's best for Tarpon. All I can say is, Zoots and Stammas have been very upright with what developments they do. It's going to get that, it's going to change again in the county with their planning and zoning. So to say that you can't do this, you can. And I guarantee you, the county's going to change their planning and zoning rules and regulations and overlays again. All you have to do is ride around the county and see what they have allowed. If they didn't want these things, they shouldn't have done what they did county-wise and let developers have it. You have a right to expand Tarpon Springs and get it on the tax roll. If, I would invite these people to come into Tarpon Springs and be part of our community and work with us as a community.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
My name is Linda Fox. I live at 2684 St. Andrews Boulevard. For your information, in addition to what you just heard, the drainage for the Suncoast Parkway affects us. That was put into place back in the 80s, and when I say "us," I mean us residents in Cypress Run. Some of the studies have said it comes back to the fact that this was put into place in the 80s by the Department of Transportation while building the Suncoast Expressway. The water flow would travel west. This flow causes Cypress Run to flood, East Lake Drive to flood, and Highland Road to flood, and has been said that the wetlands from their current status will be reduced. Where is all this water going to go? The developers are going to do what they're going to do, and then they're going to be gone, and they're going to leave the mess. As, I know that we don't vote for you, but you do. Go to your constituents, and you ask for time to speak at their meetings. And you're not told, we've heard everything from every politician that's going to come in. So don't repeat what other politicians have once said. That's how you made us feel last week, when you said to us, "Don't repeat the same old thing, because it doesn't matter." And you're voted on by people. How dare you treat your constituents like that? I'm glad I'm not a voting person in Tarpon Springs.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Zervis Cook, 1041 Royal Burke Dale Drive in Tarpon. This has just been a fascinating process for me, because I've never been through anything like this before. But what I found the most disappointing was the statement, you know, from all of the hearings, was when the same attorney, not you, Mr. Trask, said, "What's in the best interest of Tarpon Springs residents doesn't matter here. Only the law does." And then to learn that she conflated the issues and was saying that, you know, if you meet criteria, you must vote for annexation, and then only to learn from the board, the county commission, that you don't have to, just the inconsistency is really disappointing. Your Planning and Zoning Commission is asking you to say, is asking you to deny annexation. The county's asking you to deny annexation. We are too. And I just leave that with you. And then just one more point, we're pretty sure, the barren land that Terry showed you that photo is a Pioneer project. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Got to ask you to all move down here, so we keep this moving. Thank you. Appreciate it.
James Parish, 1012 East Lake Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. I own the farm on the corner of East Lake Drive and North Highland Avenue. My property is going to be the last stop for the water running off of your development if you annex this property. I'm concerned with flooding. Mr. Mayor, last week, you were concerned with flooding. You listened to the engineer say there's two concrete culverts going under Highland Avenue. What he failed to tell you is the culverts are dilapidated, the concrete is busted, they're in disrepair. One of them is even so bad that the road is starting to wash out. I don't know what's going to happen if there's an increase of water flow hits these culverts. Pinellas County doesn't seem to be worried about fixing them. If you annex this property, this becomes your development. If your development causes my property to flood and causes these culverts to fall apart, I mean, it could be millions of dollars to repair these culverts in this road. And I don't want to see the city of Tarpon Springs have that liability. And the liability of, you know, what I plan to do with my property, it's approximately 120 feet wide of clearing before the trees, approximately 1,200 feet long. I want to clear this property, and I want to do some agriculture, and I want to be self-sustaining. I retired this year. The only income I have is my social security. So I do plan on trying to do something on this property. We presently grow, we've been trying to grow some moringa trees, various fruit trees, you name it. We're trying to see what grows in this area, and we want to expand on that. We also have a very large-growing honeybee population. My wife and I are beekeepers. And we would like to put bee hives down along this property, which we can't do if it floods out, because that's going to damage the bee hives. And your average bee hive is worth about $400. And if we put, you know, 100 bee hives down there, that's a lot of liability. And I don't want to see the city of Tarpon Springs, you know, take responsibility for that. But I appreciate you listening to me, and thank you, Mr. Donovan, and other members of the board, and Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, hello. Rich Caputo, 611 East Lake Drive, Tarpon Springs. And I know we've all talked about all the wildlife issues and all the other issues, and we're told we can't talk about this anymore, because somebody else talked about it. But you guys don't live there. We live there. We just want something that's congruent with the neighborhood. We want people to be able to enjoy the last bit of Pinellas County that still has some land, and we're not right on top of each other's. Let these guys build their development. Just give us our fair share, what we intended and we bought there. That's all we want, and I have no more else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, now it's time for the applicant to make any closing statement or summary, and maybe address some of the questions that were raised by Attorney Thomas.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifications. First of all, I didn't get a copy of what Ms. Thomas handed out, but if it's ordinance 1213, which is the establishment of the East Lake Overlay District, nowhere in this ordinance does it restrict the density. As Ms. Seal's letter specifically points out, the East Lake Overlay District specifies general goals and policies of very low density. And even though this has nothing to do with tonight's hearing, which is for annexation only, you will recall that the requested future land use category is residential very low. Ms. Seal's letter does point out that in the Pinellas County Comprehensive Plan, there is a recommended limitation of density unless very low density and other community characteristics are met. So I did want to clarify that. Further, in the House Bill 699, which I presume was the other document that Ms. Thomas passed out, it specifically states that a property owner may apply for and be granted voluntary annexation into a municipality after the approval of such application. This is what's going on now. There's no dispute that the McAlpin property was in the East Lake Overlay District, and that this property, which is adjacent to and contiguous with McAlpin, is also in the East Lake Overlay District. The owners of this property are saying they don't want to be in Pinellas County, they want to be in the city of Tarpon Springs. Interestingly, the Anclot property that pictures were passed out, which we believe is probably Pioneer's industrial project, is being developed in unincorporated Pinellas County. I know that you all would like to annex that, and there's a development agreement between Pinellas County and the Pioneer Developers with respect to the development of that property. And their tree removal permit was issued by Pinellas County as well. Tonight's annex, hearing is about annexation. There are not changes since the last hearing. In the staff report, the staff simply said that they had distributed notice to Pinellas County and had received no comments. You've now received comments. The commission did have a work session after the opponents appeared before them and asked them to send this letter. Accessory dwelling units have always been a part of this request, and the East Lake Overlay does not apply upon annexation. I'll once again state, these developers desire to have, to be part of the city of Tarpon Springs, and to work with the city to develop this property, which will be approved at a future meeting, and the type of development at a future meeting, within the rules and confines of the city of Tarpon Springs. It meets the criteria for annexation, and we respectfully request that you exercise your authority and annex this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Serna, does the city have any closing statement or summary that you'd like to give?
Yes, just very briefly. We went through our findings at the first meeting, and we stand behind those findings and our recommendation.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, it's back to the board for the board's consideration.
Thank you. Louis, can I ask you a couple of questions, please? There were many questions during the last meeting and this meeting as well. Does this application meet the standards of Tarpon Springs and the criteria of Tarpon Springs?
It meets the standards for annexation, yes.
Okay. Do you believe this is good for Tarpon Springs to annex this property?
That's really not for me to say. It's just, our finding is in regard to the criteria in the code.
Thank you. Commission comments?
I've got a couple of questions.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks. So I did receive two letters from the county commission. One came from Karen Seal, who's the chair of Pinellas County Commission, and the second one came from Dave Eggers, who is North County Representation for Pinellas County. And both of them had talked about this, what was brought up tonight was Florida State Statute's Chapter 171.004, voluntary annexations are legislative in nature and if are discretionary and not mandatory. Tarpon Springs has some additional code that overlays on this as well, and I was wondering if our city attorney could just touch on that for a second, where it puts into a quasi-judicial hearing, which is where we're currently in today, tonight. So although the state of Florida has a statute saying it's discretionary and legislative, the city of Tarpon Springs actually has another layer that makes it quasi-judicial. So if you can confirm that for me, city attorney?
Okay, so first of all, I want to make it absolutely clear, the statute that was referred to earlier by the attorney does not say it's legislative. What it says is that you may agree to annex, and that's what they rely upon, the word "may" to determine the fact that it is legislative. It's our position that the city commission in reviewing the annexation needs to determine whether there's competent substantial evidence and finding that all of the criteria are met, and if that is in fact the case, that the application should be approved. We are deeming it to be quasi-judicial, because we believe that's what the case law provides. In addition to that, we believe that when you establish a criteria, that it is necessary for you to treat it as quasi-judicial. So I don't agree with the position that the county is taking, but that's an issue for another day, so.
Okay. I've got a question for Louis. We talked about contiguous land and the two parcels. Is there concerns with that?
No, there's not.
And then, when you look at stormwater discharge, can you give a little bit of what the requirements are from an applicant from a stormwater discharge, and where the stormwater has to stay and flow? Is that something you could share about?
Yeah, that doesn't pertain so much to the annexation. It will be, they will have to go through full permitting through the South Florida Water Management District, so that's about all I can speak to as far as what the requirements are. I can't speak to specific requirements, but they are very detailed.
And that's strictly for site plan?
Yes, the PD rezoning.
Okay.
Commissioner Carr, Mr. Semino is here, if you would be available.
Hold on a second.
If you would like him to address the stormwater question.
So, Commissioner, would you like the engineer to step up to answer the question? Are you satisfied with the answer that you received from Mr. Serna?
The staff answer was sufficient in this situation. I mean, we're here in an annexation hearing, in a site plan hearing, so this is sufficient.
Thank you.
Thanks, Louis. And then, Mr. Attorney, I know case law was brought up a few times. I'm not an attorney, nor do I study case law, nor do I have a book of case law. How do we apply case law that was brought up in discussions to something like this?
Well, first of all, she didn't submit any case law.
Correct.
She referenced case law. And those are the arguments that she's using for you to take a position on a particular fact or particular presentation that was made. So, you know, you could give whatever probative value that you think is necessary, as it applies to the law that's being presented or at least argued by that lawyer. She has not provided you with that case law, though.
Okay.
So, I didn't have it, so I don't really know, you know, what she's arguing, so.
Thanks for clarifying. And then, coming back to Louis, I just want to confirm, all criteria has been made, or has been met, correct?
Thank you, Mayor. My questions were actually answered, but is this the time for final comments from the commissioners?
Yes, you can. You can comment.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Again, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know it's been a long process. Like you guys said, it's been pretty much since summer that you guys have been coming out here. And, you know, your voices don't fall on deaf ears. We do take into consideration everything that you say. My personal opinion, the annexation meets all criteria, and most importantly, it's voluntary. Nobody is or will be forcefully annexed. Also, similar to what I noted last meeting, the argument to not bother approving it because of expensive legal fees or a lengthy legal battle, that's not really a valid argument. That's almost trying to intimidate the board into making a decision. And also, I just wanted to touch on how a lot of fingers are being pointed at our city attorney. Our city attorneys do a great job, and I just want to make it really clear that the board, each board member is responsible for their own decision. You know, my vote is my vote, so if you're frustrated with the decision made here tonight, look to the board members and not to staff.
Well, thank you. Before, I'll entertain a motion, I'd also like to thank everybody that is here tonight. I know it's been very, very late, but we have to make a decision based on the facts that we have in front of us, and what we believe is the best thing for Tarpon Springs. I need a motion. I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry Panning?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzas?
Yes. Thank you. He already spoke. Thank you very much. Good night. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. We go to the staff comments. City Attorney?
I have nothing to discuss tonight. Thank you.
City Manager?
Well, I just want to thank everybody. As you know, with the holiday crunch and with the schedules being done, I wanted to thank everybody on this board, the way you got with staff for these last two meetings on short notice on a lot of these items. But I just appreciated the way everybody on the board got with staff, tried to get all their questions answered, knowing that there's going to be long meetings, given a chance to get everything to you before the meeting. It really worked out well. And again, with these condensed schedules and us trying to get everything done for the end of the year, you're doing that and working with staff and getting those questions so we can get them answered. I think it worked well with the process and kept these meetings from going even later than they are. So I think it was a real good team work and efforts to get through the holidays. And again, the condensed schedules, the meetings running during the holiday schedule, so I want to thank all of you on the board for that.
City Clerk?
Everybody, happy holidays and happy and safe New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
I want to say a great job to the city manager and the staff for this past Friday's snowplace. There was a ton of people down there. There was a lot of people having a great time. The boat parade was impressive. It was unbelievable how many people were around the boat parade. Also, just want to wish a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of our residents. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve the residents of Tarpon Springs and represent the city and the residents as the city commissioner. For 2019, it's really been enjoyable. Looking forward to running this race here in 2020 to be reelected and seek reelection for seat one as a commissioner for another three years, so I hope to have your support moving forward as I feel like I've expressed and have proven to you that I do my due diligence and research quite often and all items I review, small and large. So with that, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Vice Mayor Terry Panning?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I also want to express my gratitude to everyone who was involved in the snowplace like Tarpon Avenue event. It's really proved to be a fantastic event for our residents and our visitors alike, and I just want to express my gratitude. In addition to that, I would ask that the city manager and staff just continue to pass along our unanimous thanks and encouragement for the first Friday events. I don't want anybody within the Merchants Association to be discouraged by our comments tonight. I just feel like this board's always looking for an opportunity for something to be better. God almighty, how many we got? But I just want to, you know, just let them know that we are supportive and are appreciative of that event. But we're just always looking for ways to improve. The parking situation has been something that's been on this commission's mind for a long time. And I think that with the help of Major Trill and some others, we will be able to have even better first Friday events, but please, don't let them get discouraged. In addition to that, I'd like to thank the board for granting my absence. It enabled me to take a trip with my father that had been planned for quite some time. And thank you for the excused absence. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and may all your dreams come true.
Commissioner Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you to the board and staff. I know the holiday crunch is affecting everybody and I'm glad we got these two meetings in. My only comment is just, Mr. City Manager, just let me know when that meeting is for the first Friday. I'd love to be there. The only weekday I'm unavailable is next Monday.
I have several announcements to make. Saturday, December 14, we have the annual Christmas parade that starts at 10:00 a.m. At the South Pinellas Avenue and ends at the Craig Park. So it's 10:00 a.m. Also, the same day, Saturday, December 14, we have the Christmas on the Sponge Docks that begins at 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday, December 15, we have the Victorian Christmas at the Stafford House that starts 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Saturday, December 21, we have breakfast with Santa, Community Center, 9:00 a.m. to 10:15 a.m. And then again at 10:30 to noon. Tuesday, December 24, line up the Baia at 6:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Spring Baia, I think this is sponsored by the Sunset Hills Elementary School, correct? Monday, January 6, is the Epiphany Celebration, a big holiday for Tarpon Springs. And yeah, the church starts at 10:30 a.m. And approximately 12:00 to 12:30 is the ceremony at the Spring Baia. I would like to wish everyone to have Merry Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I'll see you guys all next year. Well, that concludes the regular session and it's adjourned at 10:24 p.m.